Oh, thank you for the help. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Lundary Town Council Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. We're going to silence tonight so here as we come upon the holiday season so that all of our employees, our first responders, everyone here who does faithfully serve the town, and all of those here who live in town have a pleasant and safe holiday season. Thank you. So we're going to start off with public comment. Anyone for public comment this evening?
Why not? Goody, Daniel Bouchard, O'Connell Drive, Lundary. I know you're going to be discussing the budgets coming up. There's a couple of things I wanted to kind of reflect on. Your biggest contract, your biggest expense is what? Trash, correct? Besides employees?
Yes, well, medical would be the biggest, but...
Okay. So, I don't know how you address this, okay? I am like one of those recycle people that love to recycle and, you know, I'm very faithful about it. What really upsets me is this. You go drive down the road and you see these recycle barrels, these blue barrels, and they're full of regular trash, stuff that shouldn't be in there. So now what is happening to that load? It goes and gets dumped and you don't get the recycle charge. You get the regular trash fee, correct?
So, Mr. Trotter is in the back and he'll explain to me if I'm wrong. My understanding is that there's two separate trucks. The recycling truck goes to wherever the recycling center is. There is a sorting process. That sorting process takes place. There are, you know, things tied to that sorting process which would be penalties for the wrong things being in there, but still, we still get credit for whatever actual recycling is, but there probably is some sort of associated course, cost for recycling thing, for taking things out of recycling that shouldn't be there. And if I'm, he's nodding his head that I've got it right.
Okay. So I don't know how you can educate people better so that we can save money so that we're just doing the recycling. And one of the things, John, is that I was at the Auburn Road Transfer Station, I mean, in Auburn, New Hampshire, Waste Management, okay? Where they dump the trash, they dump the recycle. And all of a sudden you see the loader guy take the trash, pushes it into the truck that gets hauled to the landfill, takes the recycling that just got dumped and goes into the same truck. As somebody who recycles, I get very frustrated looking at that and I'm going, I hope that, I don't know how we educate people about that here. I know like in Massachusetts, if you don't do what you're supposed to do, they put a big X in front of your house and then I'm going to pick up your trash and I'm not going to pick up your recycling. That's my first thing.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes?
Just one quick comment to Mr. Bouchard. So I'm the chairman of the Solid Waste Environment Committee here in town.
Sure, Lynn, feel free.
And our recycling doesn't go to the Auburn Transfer Station. Our recycling goes down to Billerica, Mass.
Okay.
And they have a completely different process there for sorting out the things that shouldn't be recycled. It's a constant problem. It's a constant problem across the country with people throwing away things that they think is recyclable even though it's not. We try to educate people all the time as to what's good and what isn't through the committee. We struggle. It's a constant struggle, but we keep addressing it incrementally. We're getting better.
Yeah, because I know it's a big expense, you know, for the town. The other thing is, I wanted to address is that I heard the chief talking about, you know, some departments giving sign-on bonuses and stuff like that to try to attract people. I've seen that, really that it hurts people that are already working there, your current employees. I think that, you know, if you're in contract negotiations now, this is the time to help our current employees. I know that you're looking at overtime. Maybe that's when you have to look at the contracts as well. Because I know like for years, you know, the fire department had an issue with, you know, overtime, overtime. And I know one of the issues was the way the contract was written, you know, for certain individuals. So, I just think...
I'm running over on your time, so if you can help me out.
Oh, yeah, I know. My other thing is, I know that we've talked about funding the line items properly. As a taxpayer, I would like to see if you funded those all correctly right now, what would that be to the tax rate? Is that possible to present and say, you know, if we, if you have X amount for vehicle maintenance and we're underfunded, let's fund it correctly?
Yep.
And let's see at the end of the day, how much of an adjustment is it to the budget?
I think if you look, if you were to look at the department head budget, the cumulative department head budget, basically what the departments think that they need in order to run their departments, I think that would give you a pretty good sense of what the tax rate would look like. So we can certainly get that information together for you. I mean, it's not going to be perfect because, as I pointed out in my presentation at the kickoff, you know, Justin and I didn't necessarily agree that all of the department head asks were necessarily something that we needed to go forward with, but for the most part, if you look at those department head requests, that's what the department heads think they need.
Right. I'm just thinking that if I, if you look at those line items, instead of saying, yeah, we count on having X amount of vacancies every year to balance the budget.
Right.
You know? Never mind looking at the positions being vacant, let's fill those positions and let's fund the items properly. That's what I'd like to see.
Good suggestion.
Am I over on time?
You're way over.
Oh, that's okay.
Just a quick question. It's budget time, so I'm kind of lifting the rule as necessary.
Well, I know, it's just you have to ask the questions now because when you go through your budget process, we don't get to ask anything until at the end and it's kind of late because you guys have already done all your work.
Well, the public hearing is December 5th.
Yes.
Just real quick, and maybe Lynn, you can help me out here. When it goes down to that trash and if it's contaminated or commingled with other trash that shouldn't be in there, do we get a surcharge? Is there something that happens? Are we aware of that or...
So they factor that into our recycling costs.
So that's just part of, it's all baked in?
It's what they deal with down there and they factor that into their business costs.
So is there any way of finding out how much more we pay because of that in town? Is that possible?
I'm sure, I'm getting a no from the back of the room. So I guess the answer is no. Because that's what he's telling me.
All right.
That's it, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Ray Capistran, 49 Cala Road. I was unable to make the last council meeting, and I know that there was a topic brought up about speed limits. I just want to take some opportunity just to give a few comments on it.
Sure, absolutely.
Because I was, I was the one who represented the Lord and Commons community back at the last traffic committee meeting and figured, and I know that it was sent for further review, the topic, and it was sent for further review, so I figured I'd come and just offer some thoughts on it tonight.
Certainly.
I won't take a lot of your time. So, Lord and Commons, we're made up of essentially three roads, Cala Road, Iris Lane, and Clover Lane, and it's a community that's going to be, I don't have the total number, about 135 odd homes. Right now, we're about 120, 125 homes that are built out, so we're about 90% built out. And we've got a lot of kids, a lot of walkers, a lot of dog walkers. Speeds out there, in our feeling, are quite high.
Do me a favor, could you just pause for one second?
Sure.
Mr. Wally, are these, are these a town-accepted roads yet? Lord and Commons? All but a portion of the town has accepted these roads? That's a yes? Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we actually have authority over them.
I understand. Appreciate that.
Please proceed.
And like most of the town, we don't have any streetlights or sidewalks, so everybody's going to be walking on the, on the streets. Delivery drivers, AMX, you know, Amazon, FedEx, UPS, you know, are always driving quite fast, as well as even residents and construction activities around there. When we went to the traffic committee, you know, it was, it was voted then that they would, they would come with a recommendation of reducing the speed limit there from the default down to 25 miles an hour in the community. I'm hoping, you know, that, you know, I'm here tonight just to request that, and when you do take it up again, that you sincerely consider bringing that speed limit down to 25 in that community. You know, I understand that the ballot question back in March, you know, basically failed, that it was, you know, the answer came back to no to drop down the default speed limit from, you know, what it is from 35 down to 30. However, I understand that, but we can paint everything with a broad brush. We've got to look at these communities, we've got to take, I think we have to take a look on a case-by-case basis, and I truly feel for our community, it would be best in everyone's interest, before something happens, let's do something there, let's get it reduced and posted to a lower stated speed limit. So, that's why I wanted to come to the board, and I respectfully request that you consider that when it does come back up.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening. Let's take a moment and introduce to you folks the newest member of the Lundary Police Department. To my left here is Officer Zachary Costiglioni. Zach completed the police academy, graduated Friday after 16 weeks of training. So he's the new member in the face of the PD. He started his FTO training today with Officer Cam Varrier, who's seated in the back. Officer Costiglioni is going to go through 12 weeks of additional training to learn the Lundary way. So I just wanted to take a moment and introduce him to the board. If you don't mind, just please go ahead and say hello.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Officer. Nice to have you.
Welcome, congratulations.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Did he retire of any Chief Hart's records up there?
No, he did not.
That's okay, we have to keep working on that.
We still have any public comment?
Absolutely.
Ray President, 3 Gary Drive. There's a lot going on here with budget season, a lot of things to consider, but there's a lot of impacts too on the citizens. One of the things in particular, in addition to water, is electric power. We have EverSource coming to the town council and telling us that they have to replace 13 miles of laminated poles, which they are in the process of doing. I don't think it's complete yet, it's pretty well done. And their explanation was that they're old and the woodpeckers are attacking them. Personally, I've got a little problem with that because that's, well, you can do your own homework on that, but in addition, they're coming back in February, I mean, they've already increased the cost by 100%, or close to it. They're coming back in February for another increase, and who's paying for all of this? Who's paying for all these telephone poles, I'm sorry, high-tension utility poles to be replaced? I'd kind of like to know, is this showing up in our bill? Who's paying for this and who actually owns the poles for that matter? We need to, we need to get answers because the answers we got so far, as far as I'm concerned, are unsatisfactory. And yes, we do have the right to ask questions. All too often, it seems though, the opinion is that it's, it's the federal government and it's the state government that has control over utilities, which to a degree is true, except I think the town has a right to also ask questions, what's going on? And I think that conversation needs to take place, I would suggest. So beyond that, there's a lot of other things going on. Some of these questions we need to get answered. The other one is my concern with water and Penachak Water. We need to have a conversation with them. They're going before planning to get approval for this water tank up here, which will be of some benefit to the town, but pretty much is for water fire protection for Woodmont. And yet, we get this eight-inch line on Mammoth Road that nobody wants to talk about. Now, the town should be talking to Penachak. This is concern. This is health and safety. This is about fire protection, and they don't want to talk about it. I think the town needs to have that conversation with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Do you have something you want to add?
I did. So, this past week I had the opportunity to do ride-alongs with both the Lundary Police Department and Lundary Fire Department, and I just wanted to comment from an outsider's perspective that I was thoroughly impressed with the professionalism and the way they conducted their operations. It is, I spent a considerable amount of time with each and just seeing how they are a well-oiled machine on, you know, who, when Medic 1 goes out, Engine 3 goes out, or if it's a ladder call, then the people that were on the engine go to the ladder, and yes, it was a little confusing for me, but how everyone knew that they had a place where they needed to be from when there was an OUI, or I'm sorry, an OUI investigation being conducted, that the other sector car would automatically go and back up the other car. I was just thoroughly, thoroughly impressed, not surprised, but impressed at how both departments conducted just with the utmost professionalism. I feel absolutely confident in the safety of our community, that our lives are dependent on these women and men, and I want to say thank you. I am looking forward for DPW. I had asked Mr. Wally if I could do a ride-along with him as well, and someone in one of the big trucks, and again, I can't thank you enough just for having such a high standard, so thank you so much for that.
All right, with that, public comment is closed. I'll accept a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Holders in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If it's affirmative. We have a charter amendment, public hearing, Section 5.7, Treasurer. Mr. Town Manager?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is something that has been discussed for at least a year. It was raised during the last budget cycle and ultimately because of a quirk in the law, the advice that I gave at that time and the advice that Attorney Ramsdale gave was that 2021 was not an opportune time to entertain a change to how the treasurer is installed, and specifically for everyone's benefit, what we have right now is a treasurer who is elected to a three-year term. And as I said, because of a strange feature of the statute, putting this on the ballot last year could potentially have created some pretty confusing issues. I raised this at least once, I think twice, in the last month or two, and ultimately consensus of the council at least favored moving this forward for a public hearing to discuss whether the town treasurer should be appointed as opposed to being elected. And the reason for that is, and I will allow the Finance Director to jump in if he has anything to add, that while there certainly are municipalities that have elected treasurers in 2022, they tend to be smaller communities that do not have town charters, nor a town manager form of government, town council form of government, and therefore, I suggest to you that adopting this amendment is something that would place us more in line with communities of like size. It is something that the Finance Director and I believe should at least be considered for the reason that almost all of the functions of the town treasurer can be performed in-house, and we can, we can get into that a little bit more later, but this is something that we think would improve efficiency and give the town council a little bit more of a role in determining who it is that is installed into this position.
Anything there, Justin?
Nope. The only thing I would have to add is this allows you the ability to have a qualified individual that has to come before the town council and present their qualifications instead of the risking a unqualified person running for treasurer through the election and being elected by the popular vote in that way. Again, there's nothing wrong with that, but an unqualified individual, we've been lucky where we've had qualified individuals. My concern is the luck runs out at some point and we have somebody that's not qualified and they at that point would have more authority to be able to do things and put the town at risk financially.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
One thing that I neglected to mention was initially the proposal was to propose or evaluate two changes, one being the method of appointment or election, the other being the length of the term that the treasurer would have once installed. We subsequently received some legal advice that changing the term from three years to one year would create additional complications and uncertainty, and therefore, the proposal that is before you this evening is simply to change the method of installation from elected to appointed. In other words, the treasurer would continue to serve a three-year term.
How long?
Three years.
So the current treasurer's term is up in two years?
That's correct.
Few years from this March?
Correct. She's one year into her three-year term.
So, as an example, if this went to the ballot, it was passed, they would still finish their term before someone was appointed?
Actually, no. So she would serve until, and this is where the statute gets a little strange, she would serve until the next annual town election. So she would serve for one more year and then her tenure would terminate and the appointed treasurer would take, would take office.
If it passed?
If it passed.
Okay.
Would that term be for three years, once the person takes over?
Correct.
So it can reset the three-year?
Exactly.
Questions from the council before I go to the public?
All righty. So, just a couple of questions. How long have we had a charter?
Since 1996.
Okay, so for a very long time.
Since I was 10.
There you go. I just want to put this in perspective, I'm kind of framing what I have to say. So, my other question would be to Justin, why do we need to be in line with big towns or cities? What does that get us to be in line with other towns?
I can...
That was your words, so I just...
Yes, I'm happy to speak to that. I think that one of the things that Lundary gets right is we have a modern, efficient town charter and a modern, efficient form of government. And so it is the case that that resembles the town meeting form of government with a Board of Selectmen, much less than other communities. We have a professional workforce, we have a professional town council, and I would, I would say that you want to be in line with other communities that have the same thing, and those tend to be the larger communities in the state where you don't have a lot of inefficiencies, and I would say that Lundary is one of those communities.
Okay, so in your words, we are in line. So if this isn't broke and hasn't been broke, why do we need to fix it? Why the change all of a sudden if in over 25 years plus, maybe 30 years, has there been an issue? Has there been a problem? Have we ever had someone who could not do this job? And if we did, why wasn't that being brought forward to the council that this was a problem way back when and who that person was and what the problem was?
Well, to answer your question, Counselor Paul, I can only speak for the time that I've been serving as town manager and before that as Assistant Town Solicitor. I think that you, you heard the Finance Director talk about some of his concerns. We're in the risk management business here and it's incumbent on us to identify risks that we see coming down the pike and to advise the policymakers about that. It is certainly the case that we have had in the last two or three years suggestions that there's missing money or that we need to do a forensic audit or that someone has done something wrong. And so I am concerned, like the Finance Director is concerned, that if somebody of that mindset got into the town treasurer position, that we would stand to lose a lot as a community. We are, the business of government would grind to a halt. And that's a policy decision for the town council and ultimately for the voters, but I, but I do worry that putting someone into that role who doesn't understand governmental financing principles or who has that mindset that there's missing money could do a lot of damage.
So, my question again is, if this had been an issue?
This has not been an issue. Let's, let's clarify right now, this has not been an issue. As Mike mentioned, this is a risk management...
Okay, so you're philosophizing that it may be an issue sometime in the future, maybe?
There is the potential. We, as I used to say when I was an auditor...
Okay.
Okay. One at a time.
I still have some more questions.
Can I just finish that? As I used to say as an auditor, I'm not worried about you, I'm worried about your replacement. We don't know what's next. We could get somebody very qualified, we could get somebody that doesn't know anything and then decides to take the title Town Treasurer and go take out lines of credit in the town's name, and if I didn't bring this to your attention, then that falls on May. Now that this has been brought to the town council's attention, it is a risk management option. It is up to the town council as the elected officials to determine how to proceed forward.
Okay. So, I have three more questions.
Absolutely.
The next one is, I would love to see the job description and duties of the treasurer. I also see the treasurer position as being voted because it is a third-party watchdog. It should, it's the person should be looking at the invoices and questioning, what is this for? What is this check for? What are they, did you get three quotes for it? And in my mind only, is what I believe that job is supposed to be. Now, I'm hoping that the person in place that we have is doing that. I'm sure there, when we get somebody who is elected, there's a little bit of a training thing that goes on for them. I really just feel that this is a slippery slope. It wouldn't be a bipartisan or an outlooker looking in at a problem. If you appoint it, I feel like it becomes a town, is connected to the town and it is not a third-party watchdog, in my own opinion. You don't have to agree with me.
I fully understand. Can I ask, do you feel that way about the Energy Task Force that was appointed?
The Energy Task Force is purely advisory and it's doing, gathering data and delivering it to bigger boards, so they're being watched as to what they do by getting information, bringing it to another board to has power to say yes or no, or even fact-check their decision. To quite honest, I don't see the connection at all, but that's my opinion. I do think it's important to have boards and committees, and I do think it's important to have watchdogs, and I do think that that gives the residents some peace of mind that, you know, like you said, that we're protected against that person who may decide to take a credit card, that there's somebody watching somebody, and maybe not people of the same group, just like at Election Day. We want a mixture of both Democrats and Republicans watching the ballots going in. You don't want just all one party there, right? So that's how I feel about it. And so for me, this should stay the way it was unless we have some hard, hard proof that the people we've had have been not doing the job, not qualified, and that you can say to me, Deb, I can give you 10 instances that this could have happened, or five instances, even three, and do it publicly, then maybe I would change my mind. But for this person, this is how I feel, and I'm hoping that this, that I don't think we can change it, I'm not sure, I think it has to go to the voters. we can change it, I'm not sure, I think it has to go to the voters.
It does, yes.
Okay. So, I'm hoping that the voters out there listening are hearing this, that they're taking away their control, and I think that is something that should not be taken away.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just answer a couple of those concerns that, or questions that were raised by Counselor Paul. So, the duties, the job description of a, of a town treasurer is in RSA 4129. I have a copy of it here if you'd like to see it. In terms of oversight, we've never had more oversight.
Excuse me? You've never had what?
We've never had more oversight.
Or more, okay, sorry.
I can tell you that every single expense that the town pays is reviewed by the department head, it's reviewed by Justin, and it's reviewed by me. And on a weekly basis, I can tell you that I walk down into the finance department and I ask, "What is this expense? What, why are we paying this?" And there's always an explanation that's given. And that gives me the ability and it gives Justin the ability to ask the same questions to the departments, to make sure that we understand what's going on in those departments so that we can be accountable to you, the town council. I would also point out that if the concern is that the public doesn't know what's going on in Town Hall, there is no one who is more open to public scrutiny, and there is no one who is more helpful to requests for information than the finance director, Justin Campo. And I could tell you that he spends hours each day on the phone with residents explaining the town's finances. We also produce upon request information to citizens and to the town council about exactly what the town is paying and who the town is paying it to. And that's something that in the past was done for town councillors upon request, and it's something that we're happy to continue to do if requested. So, Mr. Chairman, in terms of whether there is financial oversight that's being conducted at Town Hall, I can tell you, the town's financial oversight has never been stronger.
Okay.
To his three, to your statement, I have three more questions now. Number one, I do think that Justin does a very good job and is very good about being upfront with the numbers and stuff. Personally, I don't understand the need for all the defense. I'm not accusing anyone of doing anything in that there isn't a good checklist right now, a good watching now. But what happens when you're not town manager? What happens when you're not the director of finance? There's still that problem that could arise, we don't know. So, I, I don't understand the defensiveness, the pushback, and I do think that you are very, very honest, and I do think you're doing a very, very good job, probably better than has ever been in this town since I've been here, and that's been 26 years.
Thank you.
And I've said that to both of you privately. But I still think that it's good to have somebody from the outside, not in the building, looking in and just taking a quick glance. And if there's nothing there, it shouldn't be a big deal. And that's my, now I'm done. Thank you. And I would like to see that, I will say, if you have a chance.
Just a couple of things for clarification. If this was to go to the voters, it would be the Eighth Amendment to the town charter that was written in 1996. One of the most significant amendments happened in 2011 when we changed the form of government. Everything was working just fine, but the voters decided to change the form of government. Documents do change, policies do change over time. So, I understand why you want to bring this forward to us, it's part of the process. The charter is not permanent. It does change over time, but the voters change it over time, just for clarification purposes. So, anyone else? Budget Committee, council?
I want to talk to what you just said. As someone who sat on that charter commission to change the town meeting, there was a reason that that was happening. People were complaining and not understanding why when we voted in no to AES, AES got built, why we said no to a police station, it still got built, why we said no to a town hall, it still got built. And it was because there was a second part of the voting that people had to go to on Saturday, and for some reason, people didn't understand that. And that's why the charter got changed, which was so many people were felt that the chart, the, the change of government was so that the majority rule in voting would be whether they were educated or not educated on the subject. It's the way we choose our president, they don't, not necessarily educated on who's the best guy, but the majority rules. And that was the biggest thing that pushed that charter commission forward at that time, and, and I do remember the, the controversy around it, but that was the reason. It wasn't just done because it needed to be done, it was done because the people started paying attention and wanted to know why their vote wasn't being heard on Tuesday because they didn't finish it on Saturday at the town meeting.
All right, so your explanation's incorrect. AES was an advisory vote and was not done through town meeting. It was an advisory vote, it was not done through town meeting. The police department was a bond, voted on on Tuesday, not done through town meeting. So, if you're going to make the statements, they've got to be 100% correct. The people voted to build the police station. And you can disagree, but we can go pull everything and I can show you you're wrong.
And, and it was, we were voted one way and then the words were, "If this was to fail, this was to happen."
That's not what happened. Right? You're making things up. It's not what happened.
I am not making things up, John.
Yes, you are.
I am not a revisionist.
Yes, you are.
No, I'm not, and I will dig this stuff up.
Yes, you are.
No, sorry.
You're, no, you're wrong.
Okay, and you're always right. You're never wrong.
Well-
And I think you are wrong right now.
If you're going to talk about tone, you need to change yours.
I have explained this to you many times. My tone is because of a disease that I have called Lyme disease and it's called Lyme rage. When I get stressed, I cannot control it, I am not mad and I'm not upset. It's just something I can't control.
Nicer to people.
I am being as nice as I possibly can.
Please be nicer.
You should be.
Just a couple of questions. Thank you for the presentation. I do have RSA 41 colon 29 pulled up regarding the duties and responsibilities of a town treasurer. I was wondering if, please, you may, for the listening public, not read line by line, but give a brief overview of the, of the duties of a town treasurer, please.
If I could punt that over to the finance director, he'll, he'll do a much better job than me explaining, since he actually understands that, these terms in a way that I don't.
So, the town treasurer, long and short, is responsible for the financials of the town. They're responsible for ensuring the banking partnerships as well as allowing the deposits to be deposited in a timely manner. They should be verifying that the financial policy, both the purchasing and all others are properly being followed and verify that we are staying in, in line, not in line, but in compliance with all the other RSAs that are financially based. That's the long and the short of it.
And, and just for clarification, so I can understand, we have had a treasurer for, since the beginning of the charter, is that correct, for quite some time?
I, I would believe so, I can't verify that.
So, we looked into this, this is one of those that we were not able to determine how long we've had a treasurer, because frankly, treasurers go all the way back to pretty much the, the founding in New Hampshire.
It's your 10.
Right, a little longer than that. So, I think it's fair to say for all of, you know, remembered history, we've had a town treasurer in Lonon Derry.
And then, correct me if I'm wrong, you're asking, just to ma, to, just to make sure that I understand, so you're asking the council for a decision if this gets placed on the ballot for the voters to make the final determination?
So, I, I'm actually asking for something somewhat less than that. This is a multi-month process and a multi-step process and, which requires submission of the proposed amendment to the state, Department of Revenue Administration, to the Attorney General's Office, and to the Secretary of State, and they need to say, "Yes, this is legal," or "No, this is not legal." It then comes back to the council at that point, which would either place it on the ballot or not place it on the ballot. And that has to happen before January 18th when the warrant is finalized. But it doesn't, we don't get to that point if the council doesn't determine tonight that, quote, "The charter amendment is necessary." That's a, a strange way of saying that the, the council supports moving forward with the process and at least allowing the state to weigh in on it and ultimately the voters.
So, again, just to test that, for yes, and make sure I understand exactly what you're saying, tonight you're asking for a vote from the council to determine either A, have this dead in the water-
Yep.
Or B, take one step in the other direction-
Correct.
Which is specifically putting it, presenting it to the state to see if it's legal, you know, within, within the jurisdiction of the law.
Correct.
As well as, and, and then it would determine, based on their determination, if it's yes-
Yes.
Comes back for the council to hear that recommendation from the state, and then the council will make another decision if it goes on the ballot or not.
Correct. Ultimately, the council could vote yes tonight to move forward with the process and vote no sometime in late December or early January after all of that has taken place.
So, excuse me, I, there's a lot that I don't understand, and I think that, like, there, there's still a lot of questions that I have that I, you know, I, I'd like to do some more research and stuff and where I'm at. I do, do we have to vote tonight or is this something that we can, you know, hold off another meeting?
Yes, I, we, because it is that 60-day process that requires the back and forth with the state, and because we are on a deadline to finalize the warrant no later than January 18th, if we were to not make a decision on this tonight, it wouldn't be possible to get this on the ballot in, in March.
So, it doesn't have to go on the ballot.
Right.
We're only going to go through the process if, if we decide to go through it.
So, final, final question, if I may, Mr. Vice Chair and Chair. The vote yes tonight from, in the majority of the council, if it were to pass, is only taking the next step, not enacting it and not putting it on the ballot to, after tonight, unless those other steps happen?
Correct. But I don't want to be misleading, the, the language of the statute requires the council to determine tonight that it is necessary. But as I said, that is a clunky way of saying, "Yes, we want to take the next step."
Thank you.
So, I think that's where we're getting hung up, the word necessary. Necessary to present it to the, to the, to the state or necessary to make a change?
I think you, you suggest a very reasonable interpretation, necessary to present it to the state. I think that makes a lot of sense.
That's, that's makes, that's makes a big difference.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else? Budget Committee, council, go into the public?
Tom Esti, lifelong resident.
So, Mr. Esti, I know that you don't understand, I, because we went through this once before, I have to have the address, we have four minutes, is that okay, please?
Sure. So, just out of curiosity, the, saying the address, why do we have to do that?
It's part of our council rules.
It, it's a rule?
It's our council rules, yes.
Okay. Well, I mean, maybe that, that might need to change as well, but anyway, Nine Old Nashville Road.
I appreciate it.
So, I, I think this, this should go back to the people and they need to vote on it. It just shouldn't be like up to you.
That's what we're saying, Mr. Esti, we're saying it would go to the people to vote on it. That's what the process is. So, the council hasn't done anything. If the council decides to put this on the charter-
Yep.
Then they would vote, the people would vote whether or not we would go, would have this process. They, they decide the change, not the council.
So, the thing is, we, we voted for yours, so why do you want to change it? I, I just, I do not get it. If you vote on something, I mean, it's, almost sounds kind of like a dictatorship.
So, in this particular case, when it comes to the charter, what happens with the charter is, is that what the town manager's saying, "If we decide to go through with this tonight, it will go to the state."
Yep.
The state will look at it, they'll say, "Okay, it needs to say this, no, it can't say this, yes, you can do this, no, you can't do that." They'll send it back to us, we'll have more discussions about it. We may or may not put it on the ballot for the voters to vote in March.
Yep.
But in order to do that, we have to post it 60 days ahead of time. So, it may come back here and we may say, "You know what? We don't want to do this."
Why wasn't this brought up a long time ago instead of like trying to rush everything through? Because it just seems like it's being like, kind of like rushed. Maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, it's come up the last two years, so-
There was an extended discussion about it last year.
So, what, what he's asking us is, is like, "Okay, let's put this out there." The council doesn't decide whether we do this or not. It would have to go to the voters and the voters would have to say, "Yes, we want to make this change." The council doesn't have that authority.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yes, sir.
I do have a quick question, real quick, just clarification.
Go ahead. Can you hold one second, please?
Excuse me, thank you. Will, will this be a public hearing, this, say this, say, state does determine the legality of, of this, will it be another public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, just to, you know, mention what Tom just said, it seems rushed. You're in the budget process right now. To me, that's what you should be focusing on, not on this. This is something that should be discussed, maybe, you know, when you're not that busy with all these other issues. I don't see why the change needs to take place personally, all right? It's nice to have another set of eyes looking at it, that's not, and Mike, I think you're doing a great job, I think these guys are doing a great job, but I've been here a long time, and I can tell you, I've looked at other town managers that haven't done that great of a job, okay? So, is this finance person going to be answering to the town manager, all right?
So, let me see if I can answer your question. The town treasurer would not go away under this amendment. The only difference is the appointing authority for almost everything else in town is the town council. So, whoever that town council is sitting would still remain the appointing authority. That town treasurer would still have all the same duties they would have under the statute. The only difference is, is they wouldn't go through an election in March every three years. Nothing else changes. And the voters decide whether or not they want to do it that way or not.
Correct, but does this, does this treasurer respond, answer to the town manager?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
The town treasurer would have to, by, by statute, actually answers to the Department of Revenue.
Okay, so they wouldn't be having to answer to a town manager and saying-
Correct. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Justin, but I would have literally no authority over this person.
That's correct. They have more authority over the financials than I would.
Okay, because I, I look at the big picture of, of the town, and I look at the big picture of our budget, okay? And for years, you know, that budget has been, the can has been kicked down the road, kicked down the road by different people, okay? And that's why you're, where you are today, all right? And it's difficult when you have a finance director who might not agree with the town manager. He has to, and it's his boss, so he's going to do whatever he tells him to do. I think you guys are doing the right thing right now with this budget, and I'm very pleased to see how you guys are, are proceeding with this. My concern is with the finance person being appointed by the board, okay? Now, it could be, end up being some, you know, a good old buddy-buddy, let me finish, John.
I hear what you're saying.
Okay, but, you know, I, I just don't want to see that happen. I mean, I, I think it's great that we have another set of eyes totally separated, okay? And I understand what Justin's concern is, and I understand what Mike's concern is, okay? That somebody could screw it up, okay? But it's like that with anything.
So, it's much like the planning board or a land use board. The town council appoints to the land use boards. We have absolutely no authority to remove them or tell them what to do once we appoint them. Same thing with the town treasurer. No authority to do it, just, is along these lines?
Yeah.
So, it's much like that. I don't know exactly how it works, what I do know is, is that the, there are very distinct rules around it that the council has no control over, other than being the appointing authority. That's it.
Yeah. I mean, the only thing I, I think would be nice is if we had qualifications for a person who was going to run for treasurer that, you know, be able to take that position.
I wish we could do that. That would be, that would solve the problem.
And I understand-
Some people would like that for the President of the United States.
Right. No, but I, I understand-
I mean, what can I tell you?
Right.
Welcome to America.
I think that would eliminate a lot of your concerns.
It absolutely would.
Okay, because, you know, there are people out there that can't handle their own personal finances, all right, and yet they handle these budgets, so-
I understand.
Yep. Is that a question for me, Joe?
I was just going to make comments.
I'm sorry. Question, I, just get my attention first.
Yeah, so, I was just trying to say that I think you were making my point for me. What I was going to say is I think there's a vast difference between, we got lucky, the person that's there right now, but I don't know if they do a background check on the person that's elected, I don't know if they have any background-
But I don't know if they do a background check on the person that's elected. I don't know if they have any background in treasury. Like I said, we're lucky right now.
The good thing about America.
What?
The good thing about America is anyone can run for elected office.
So that's a good part, but the point is that I think what we're trying to say is we, we want to reduce risk and say. Use the board, the people that are up here to actually make sure they're qualified, make sure the background check is done. Make sure they have some kind of financial background. So we're trying to look at a, a, option that may be better than what is.
It will fail.
Originally been entailed here.
Potentially, yes.
Right, and I.
Potentially.
Yeah, I understand that, Joe. It's just, you know, I don't know how you do it. I mean, I, it's nice to see a separate set of eyes. Okay? But I also like to see a person that's qualified for the position.
So I would envision that if this was to go forward, much like we do for every other board we interview for. People are gonna put in for it. The, whomever the town council is, is going to interview those people. And then five people who are the legislative body are going to make a decision on whether or not they think that person is qualified or not. I would hope that that, those individuals who would make that decision would solicit the opinion of the finance director. And have the finance director weigh in on that process. Now, it doesn't say that anywhere, but I would hope they would do that.
Is this a paid position?
Twenty-five hundred bucks.
Twenty-five hundred dollars a year.
Jeez.
So, yeah.
I don't know how you get qualified people to do that, but.
John, I have one more statement. Sorry, I, I just, yeah, thank you for getting my attention.
Thank you. Um, on the vein of what you were talking about. And, um, so they wouldn't have any outside pressure except for when they wanted to get reappointed. So if I didn't do or behave the way Mr. Malaguti wanted me to. Or I questioned things that Justin say didn't want me to question, or I came to the town council and brought forth issues. That maybe they weren't happy with. That would affect my reappointment. Whereas an elected official, official, their opinion doesn't matter. If the residents of the town think that that person's doing a good job, then those people will reappoint, reelect those people unless there's an issue. And then that would have been brought forth by the town manager or the finance director saying, we have an issue with our treasurer. And that would be made public. And so that, you kind of solidified what I was trying to say about being outside the circle. And looking in. Thank you.
You're all looking at me, I'm done.
Anyone else? Name and address.
Yep. Richard Blonsky, eighty-nine Hall Road. I can see both sides of this. First of all, I was London Derry's town treasurer from two thousand and one to two thousand and four. And I can tell you, I see what Justin and Mike are looking at. I get some of it, but I don't agree with it all. And I'll tell you why. When I was elected, there were individuals at that time within the town hall, in your position. And a few other positions that weren't happy I was asking questions. And within a month of me being in office, they tried to set me up on an age discrimination complaint. That went nowhere, cause it never happened. Cause they wanted me out. And those that know me, that doesn't bother me. All that made me do is dig in my heels more, because I don't get scared away. All right? When I, this couple, I don't have accounting credentials. I don't need to have them. I'm very good with money and very good with numbers. First thing I asked when I came to, into the position is, I want to see the purchasing policy. We didn't have one. I said, we need to put one. Look at the date when it was put into effect. The other thing that I put in, to, and put on, into, uh, effect was an assistant town treasurer. Cause you know what happens if your town treasurer dies? Nobody gets paid. No bills get paid and a year into my term, I had a heart attack. Not a ma- you know, very minor. It was fine, but I was out for a week. And I had an assistant town treasurer who was able to do payroll. Sue Hickey, who was the finance officer at that time, I think she came from Milford, I forget the town, I think it was Milford. They had a treasurer, after I brought this up, that had a heart attack or whatever, and they died. And nobody was getting paid, no bills were getting paid. I can tell you, as, when I was town treasurer, if I didn't know what a bill was, I did what you're doing. I did my own little mini audits and I found stuff where purchase orders were still outstanding, yet the orders had been canceled. Or that they paid four hundred dollars to have something shipped for, uh, for the fire truck. That they could have had done for two hundred and I knew that because I was the General Motors Parts Manager. So you can't just look at somebody's credential, oh, they, you know, they've got an MBA in this. Common sense goes a lot further, in my opinion. So you bring somebody in. And you guys have to approve them after the. What makes you have the right to approve them? What are your credentials to approve that person? You don't know them. So I do see both sides. You could get somebody that knows nothing, can't add one and one and come up with two. I will tell you that since Justin's been in his position, I've talked to him quite a few times. We've had disagreements. Hmm. But.
Dividing intervention.
At least, I was, he was honest with me. I think you need to leave this as a third person outside, if you want to call it watchdog. I like to call it checks and balances, like it's built into the constitution with Congress and all that. Because you don't know who will be in Mike's position maybe sometime in the future or in Justin's position. And I already had the internal influences trying to tell me what to do when I came in. They wanted me to leave my signature stamp in the finance office so that they could use it when they wanted to. And I refused to, because the treasurer before me left theirs with them. And I know that's true, because I took it out of the lock cabinet in the finance department and destroyed it. When I wouldn't leave my signature stamp, they wanted me to pre-sign checks. Told me that will never happen. It's not my money, it's the taxpayers' money. You need to have it where there isn't undue influences bringing in. I, you know, as Mr. Bouchard said, you don't know who you people are gonna bring in. It could be a friend. Hopefully that wouldn't be done, but it's been done in the past. You need to leave this for the people to decide. I don't know if you, you know, one year, you've already taken care of that, but you know, if you, if there was a way to change it to two years instead of three years. Um, I, you know, I'm okay with that, cause a lot of the stuff like with the purchasing policy, it didn't happen overnight. And as far as how long have we had a treasurer? It was well before the charter.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well before the charter. I mean, Betsy McKinney was like treasurer for like thirty years or something like that. It's a long, long time. So that's why I came tonight. You gotta have some control, some checks and balances. It's built into the federal government. Yeah, you can't get rid of them, but you know, there's, there's undue influence. I went through it. Didn't bother me, because I don't care. You don't like me? I don't care. All right? I did what I was put in that position to do. I was still working at that time. And I was putting in twenty to forty-five hours a week on that job, because every single bill that came in. That I didn't know what it was, I would ask for the paperwork. And they didn't want to give it to me. So I'd audit it myself. I'd call the vendors. I'd do whatever I had to do to find out what it was. And I found out stuff wasn't coming in. It was supposed to have been canceled. It hadn't got canceled. It's probably a lot better now. Computer systems are better. They would give me the, they'd give me a stack of checks and say, just sign them. I'm like, where's the corresponding paperwork? Oh, well, this is the way we do it. It says, new sheriff in town, not getting done that way anymore. I want all the corresponding papers. I want the printout. To this day, I have every one of my printouts showing what the checks were and where they went. I digitized it and put it on CDs and it's locked away, because I expected them to come back and try to get me for something in the long run. So leave it as an outside thing. I do understand what you're trying to say, Mike and Justin. And yeah, some of that's true. The fact of aligning with other towns, I really don't care. Um, I, I really don't. They probably do things that are wrong. We're gonna align with them too. I've been there. I've done the job. I'm sure it's changed and, you know, cause I was out in two thousand and four. Maybe you can come up with some type of criteria for the people. I, a long time ago, tried to suggest people that are on the council or anybody that spends money or is. You know, somehow involved with the spending and issuing of money. Have a credit check done. You know, what's their credit score? If they got a two hundred credit score, I don't want them handling my money. I had no problem with it, but everybody else had a problem. We can't do that. Why not? They do it for everything else. Get a credit score on them. If they can't handle their own personal money, they probably shouldn't be handling the towns. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, sir.
I want to make one comment. I just want to echo the words of Chief that said earlier. All right, we're training the officer the London Dairy way. We do things the London Dairy way here. We're not with, how dairy does it or everybody else. We have our own way of doing things. I think it's worked pretty good. So that's my comment.
Yes, sir.
John Wilson, Three Tranquil Drive. I have basically just two questions. Justin, could you describe briefly any significant differences between a treasurer for a town municipality? And a corporate treasurer? As I said, you, you think they're, all the important things are essentially the same?
Uh, a corporate treasurer would likely have more assistance in doing all those items.
Yeah, they have assistance, but I mean, in terms of the, the responsibilities.
So it essentially, in most corporate, I would believe their treasurer would be their CFO. If I'm understanding correctly, your question.
Okay. Next question is, over the years, you've been here for quite a while, so you've seen treasurers come and, come and go. Okay? How, on average, how much time do they actually spend in your office doing what I would describe as treasury work?
It, it depends on the time of year and the situation.
Yeah, but I'm, you know, on, on average. Do you think that by and large, they, most of them have always met the responsibilities of the job?
A lot of responsibilities are dedicated to myself, my department and the town clerk department.
Yeah, I under- I understand, I, pretty well, I think, what you do. And I'm not questioning any of the checks and balances and all the rest of the stuff that's going on. But if we have a treasurer, the treasurer ought to be doing the work of the treasurer, which is to make certain that. Everything and all the procedures are working properly and you can't do that without spending a fair to middle in amount of time. You know, at the coalface of the work. And I'm trying to find out how much time these people that have been elected. You know, spend in town. I just heard a guy, okay, spend a lot of time there. Okay? Is that common?
In, in most towns, that would be a common occurrence. Um, as I mentioned, the treasurer has currently delegated a lot of the responsibilities to my department.
Do they, treasurers have the authority to delegate their authority down to you? Is that part of the statute?
Yes. Me, yes.
Okay, I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Jonathan Esposito, Five Shall We Drive, North London Dairy. Listening to the proceedings, I think it would be appropriate, uh, for the town council to determine that it is not necessary to make a change to the charter at this time. I think it is a bit of an extreme move. Um, I heard Chad say that a vote by the council this evening would simply progress us to, uh, the first step. Uh, for, to preparing to get that on the ballot. I also heard the town manager state that we're really kind of at crunch time. We really only would have sixty days or so to engage the preparatory methods to get that on the ballot. That sounds like a rush, um, you know, doing something as significant as changing the town charter. Surely we could do better than taking sixty days or rushing through the preparatory steps to get this on the ballot again. I think that, uh, if there are risk management needs that the council determines needs to be met. That perhaps we could take lesser steps than determining tonight that we need to move forward with, uh, changing the town charter. Uh, I heard a number of things tonight. Um, I heard a great bit of confidence in Michael Malaguti's performance as the town manager. I heard a great bit of co- uh, confidence in Justin Campo's performance as the finance director from you folks as the town council. And I also heard that the town treasurer is ultimately accountable to, uh, the State Department of Revenue. Now, I understand, Justin, that there are significant differences between the finances of a private entity or a nonprofit and a municipality. However, uh, there are still basics in finance, what we would call the rule of three, right? Checks and balances. I'm sure you've heard that before. It does sound like we already have a robust rule of three as far as checks and balances. In preventing the town treasurer from kind of going off the deep end. I would again say, if we have identified specific areas of risk, Mr. Malaguti, in which, uh, the town treasurer as an elected official could go off the deep end. I do think there are steps, uh, lesser than modifying the town charter that we could take either at the local level. Or petitions to the Department of Revenue to make changes to appropriate checks and balances. Uh, let me just see if I've wrapped up my comments here. I appreciate your patience, folks. Uh, lastly, I, I'd just like to kind of echo some of the other remarks that have been made by qualified candidates tonight, uh, or qualified individuals tonight. Uh, elected officials are ultimately beholden to the folks that elect them. Uh, ultimately, at the end of the day, appointed officials are beholden to the folks that appoint them. I think that is something that everyone should consider. Um, at the end of the day, if the town council or, uh, a town committee is appointing a town treasurer. Who is determining the qualifications of the committee that would then appoint the town treasurer? Are those folks going to have a master's degree in finance or an MBA or have come from big corporate or another large municipality that we would like to be in line with? Uh, I'm not sure that the, uh, body that the town would put together to appoint this person would be any more qualified than the elect. You know, than the folks who elect you guys, uh, to make that determination. I would just like to make the final remark that Mr. Malaguti commented, that we have quite the, uh, professional town here as far as the voting block. I've heard John Farrell state that we had a very successful election, partly due to the level of professionalism of our voters in town. I do think that you all have expressed enough confidence in the voters that we can make the determination as to who the town treasurer needs to be. Thank you very much.
Anything else? Yes, sir.
I'm Seigman, I didn't have a, what would be the thing if our, we, our treasurer retires, we get a new treasurer in there, they go off the deep end, they do something stupid? What's in process of how we would catch that?
Well, currently, we have an assistant town treasurer. So there's a num- there's a number two. Um, so that you'd have one piece there. Um, you. If, if the, if the town treasurer, for example, if the town treasurer for, for, um, no reason at all. Decided that that individual is going to shut down government and say that we weren't going to do anything further. There would be a process in which we would have, um, you, you probably know this better than I do, in which we'd have to petition the court. To, uh, to remove that town treasurer in order to be able to have the process of government go forward. Is that right?
That's my understanding, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, it would be almost, if they, if they shut down government, you'd, you'd file an emergency order with the court immediately.
Can, Mr. Seigman, do you mind just coming up to the microphone for?
What if they were doing stuff like Justin mentioned, or like they were like writing checks or accepting payments or doing something like that? How long would it take?
We, we would catch that re- fairly quickly.
So for example, if they went to a bank and they, they, they went through a process of trying to, you know, acquire some sort of loans or money and everything. Uh, and likely in today's world and the digitized world that we live in, the bank would contact us. And say, what's the town treasurer doing here doing this? Is, is that right, Justin?
It, it is, but they could also refuse the bank to be allowed to talk to me. They can inform the bank that they cannot speak with me about the town's finances.
What about the assistant treasurer then?
The assistant treasurer only gets authority from the town treasurer, or if the town treasurer, something happens to the town treasurer, then the assistant town treasurer would take over.
The, the assistant is not a check on the treasurer, if, if, if I understand your question correctly.
They're, they're more just a substitute.
All right. Maybe we should look.
Think about it, the teacher didn't show up that day and that person takes over.
Maybe we should look at the rules of who can audit the treasurer, so they don't have carte blanche.
Well, I understand. Anything else?
Anything else?
Yes, of, of course.
Um, Patrick Cassidy, Budget Committee, Twelve Elwood Road. Um, two questions. One, is the assistant tre- assistant town treasurer appointed or elected?
Appointed.
Appointed by the town council.
By the town treasurer.
By the town. Okay. Okay.
So, you know, that, that's, that's the way it happens today.
So, the treasurer appoints their own assistant?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Richard Blonsky, Eight Hall Road. The way it's done now, the treasurer can pick who they want. They then have to be okayed by the town council. The town council can say, "No, we don't want them." They can't then go and appoint their own person? Because that, they tried doing that with me too. They tried putting in somebody they knew, and I said, "No, I want this person. They're a business owner." They, you know, have done books. There's a reason for it. So, yeah, they basically okay them at the end, but they can't put who they want in. It comes down to who the treasurer wants. If they rejected my first candidate and I would come up with a second candidate, you'd go through the process again. They'd have to say, "Okay, we, you know, vote to have this person in." So, they, the way, unless it's changed, and I don't think it has last time to look, it's been a while, that's how it works. Because I looked into it pretty good when I took over, because we didn't have anybody. We had nobody.
Fair enough. Thank you. One more question.
Of course.
So, the gentleman who spoke earlier made some solid points that there's checks and balances, and, and the town treasurer position serves as a check and balance to what you guys are doing. And in vice versa, it seems like you guys serve as a bit of a check and balance to what the town treasurer is doing. Perhaps as if this doesn't go forward, or if it doesn't pass the ballot in March, if it gets that far, then we should consider some other options for establishing checks and balances on the treasurer, so that we can avoid a problem down the road if something like that came up.
Yes, I, I mean, I, I think that's, that's a very good idea. I will say that our ability to do that is somewhat limited by the fact that the treasurer is a charter and statutory officer. And if we were to try to institute some of those checks and balances, they really wouldn't need to be written into the charter to have, have much force and effect. But yes, there is, there are things that, that could, that could be done around the edges to make sure that, you know, that result is as unlikely as possible.
Thank you. So, one second. Mr. Douglas, did you want to speak? Someone, if you're coming up a second time, if you let Mr., let the people who went one time already?
Extremely brief remark, I will not be as lengthy as before, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I wanted to respectfully offer not a correction so much. I don't think Mr. Campo was elaborative as he could have been. He raised earlier, it is correct that perhaps an elected treasurer who had gone off the rails could contact a banking institution and ask them not to communicate with Mr. Campo. However, as most folks in finance know, usually that requires several individuals. There are signature authorities, typically one individual, even an elected one with that much authority, cannot simply remove another individual from either signing checks or having online access to a bank with a simple phone call. I'm sure you didn't intend to mislead the public. I just wanted to clarify, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Yes.
My name is Martha Smith. I live at 38 Shaster Drive.
Thank you, Martha.
And I've lived in London Dairy for 40 years now. And my feeling is if it's not broke, don't fix it. I think that we've had an elected treasurer for, you know, as long as I've been here, and most of the time, it's the same treasurer who's been doing it. I haven't seen anybody run against our treasurer in years and years. And so, I guess I'm not totally supportive of this change at this time. But the other question that I have with people bringing this up about rushing it and everything else, what, what happens if you got the, sent it off to the state, you got the approval from the state, but we, we didn't put it on the ballot this year. We waited till the following election. Can we do that?
No.
So, what we would have to do is, is we would get the ballot back from them. It would come back to the council. The council would decide whether or not they wanted to move forward with it, or they didn't want to move forward with it. If the council decides they don't want to move forward with it, then it doesn't go on the ballot. If the, if the council who was in these chairs the following year decides that they want to go ahead and go forward with it, or they want to look at it, they have to go through the same process again.
Oh, the whole thing again?
The whole thing.
Yeah.
That answers that question. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, sir, Mr. Douglas. Sorry to make you wait.
Len Douglas, Six Overlook Ave. My question is, if this went to an appointment, can you appoint a town employee to be the treasurer? Or does that have to be someone outside?
The treasurer would have to live in town. That's one for sure. Can we employ an appointee? The answer is yes?
There's no reason that you could.
Yes, I guess we could appoint an employee.
Okay. So, even though the treasurer, and I'm not saying either of these guys, but moving forward, 10 years from now, you appoint an employee who your manager now is responsible for your pay and your job and your reappointment. I don't, I don't really like that idea. As far as the 11th hour thing, I think Councilor Franz was right. He has questions, and this was talked briefly, I believe, about a year ago. And now we're at the point that if you don't make a decision, it can't move forward. There's no room for questions. I don't understand why this wasn't brought up a month ago, when there would have been questions. As far as the appointment process, I've spoken to people in town, and I've asked them to stand up and say things, and they didn't. And then I went back and said, "Why didn't you say what you said you were going to say?" And the response was, "I want to be reappointed. And I don't want to offend the people that are reappointing me." I'm aware of boards in this town that people have been reappointed that have never showed up to a meeting in one, two, three, possibly even four years, but they were reappointed. Because it was just, yep, he wants it again. He wants it again. There was a planning board person who served on the planning board for years. She wanted to be reappointed. She got, due to a oops on the appointment, she got bumped for a brand-new person that was an alternate. And the thing that really offends me is I'm hearing that, and I agree, you want someone there that can do the job, but why don't we appoint the town clerk? Why don't we appoint the town moderator? Why don't we appoint everyone in town, so that government can decide how it runs better? That is, to me, bad precedent. You should not have one group that appoints everything in the town. Other towns have elected planning boards. Other towns have budget committees that are more than advisory. You guys actually, in another town, could put forward a budget and say, "Vote for A, B, or C." And the last one about the police station, yeah, it did go on a ballot, and we voted the bond. And as soon as it got voted in, the clapboard siding, the people that sit up here said, "We don't like that." It was presented with clapboard siding, but we like brick, because brick fits in. And they just decided to spend the extra money and brick the building. So, I'm not for this. I have no problem voters deciding, because I think voters should decide. The last is on my rant, I guess, is the last charter amendment, government wasn't running oh-so-well, because if it was running oh-so-well, people wouldn't have changed it. And I hear the government ran oh-so-well, but we didn't have a town council until, what, 1995? We found out tonight that half of this apparently can't be done, because you can't change the terms. We had another board in town that had, they said, "You have a quorum. You need 500 people to show up and vote anything." That was wrong. It took years to get that out, so... I don't think this 11th hour thing really works. It should have been a lot further.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have a question?
Sure.
Can we... Can we addition, like, make amendments to what is proposed to the department or the secretary of state? For example, Mr. Douglas brought up current town employees. Can we include that, like, can we include that? And I know this is another 11th hour change, but can, can we say that current members that are living in town, that are employed by the town cannot be appointed to this position?
Yes, I, I mean, you, you would have that ability. I would need to talk to council about how to move that substantive change forward, if, if that's what the council wants to do.
We can actually send this to the state the way it is. They can say yes or no. We can still make changes and send it back to the state. We have to start the process today.
Correct.
Now, my understanding is, is if they, in, in the state of New Hampshire, people who have put someone who gets paid by the town as the town treasurer, it's usually the tax collector who's appointed by the council. That's what I've heard in the past. It's not necessarily an employee who's on payroll. At least, that's what I've heard.
Correct. That's consistent with my understanding as well. And you do raise a good point, which is that the tax collector is appointed. It has been for as long as I am aware.
So, to answer his question, if we decide to send this to the state for review, two things. We don't have to do it. And the second thing is, is we can still make revisions to it.
Right. The, the problem is if those revisions are, you know, too far along in the process, that it, it kicks into it.
They'd have to be rather quick.
Right.
Windsor, how long does the state take, usually take to respond?
The state has 45 days, and they use every day.
Well, we can all, well, we can also look at it on, on December 5th and make a change and send it up to the state during those 45 days. We just have to submit within 60 days.
That's a good point, Mr. Chairman. I, I think you're probably right about that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ray Breslin, Three Gary Drive. I've heard a lot here. I think we have some pretty good oversight right now between the town manager and Justin. I, I don't see where we, we have a problem. Understand, you know, potentially, somebody could do something out of place. But I think either one of these guys is probably going to catch it. And, and the other thing, I wonder, you know, if, if this is something that, that has to go to the state, I'm, I'm wondering why, if we, somebody was thinking about this, this wasn't done previous? Or, or couldn't someone have presented this to the state and said, "This is okay or not?"
So, Mr. Chairman, if I can answer the question, it was, as I stated in my introduction, there was a, a discussion about this last budget cycle. Because the current elected treasurer was in the last year of her three-year term. And because of that statute that I referenced that says that the treasurer who is serving in office, when the charter amendment changing from an elected treasurer to an appointed treasurer is adopted, gets an additional one-year term, that had the potential to nullify the results of the election if the current treasurer were to have lost last year. And the charter amendment changing the mechanism of installation were adopted. And so, that frankly, that was a risk that we advised against, and I think the council correctly decided, even if there's a 1% risk of nullifying the results of an election, that's, that's a risk that's too great. And so, that's why this was not done last year.
Okay. I'm not sure I understand all that, but you did, but so...
Ray, basically, what he's saying is, is a person was duly elected as town treasurer. And what he is saying is, is that if the council came the next year and said, "Well, we want to do this," basically what the council's saying is, is that, "Well, we're telling these people you were duly elected, and we're gonna, we're looking for a way to nullify your election." Nobody in here, we're election officials. We don't want to nullify anybody's election.
Yeah, yeah. Well, with all due respect, I, I don't see where we have a big problem. I see the potential where there could be a problem. But with, with the way we do things here, I think we'd probably be on top of it. So, I'm not sure it's necessary. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say one thing.
Please.
And it's actually something you've said many, many times. We rushed with the trash. We've rushed with other things, and nothing good ever happened when we rushed. And if this isn't a crisis, and this isn't a problem, right at the very moment, there's no need to rush this through. And you've always said, and I quote, "There's so many things on the warrants." To have the least amount of things on the warrants is a good thing. And I, I just want to say, there's no need to rush, so why can't we wait till next year?
I would agree with you about rushing. If there wasn't a 60-day window in order to do due diligence, and we can still vote, no. We can still say, "No, we don't want to do this."
Because we, we have never had this vigorous of a discussion. I know we mentioned it at a meeting, and I said no then. I don't remember a lot of the conversation, but I don't think there was much, and I think this is the most vigorous it's been. We've listened to a few people in the audience, and they all kind of sound the same that we, we don't want to rush, so...
Just one, a quick point. I've been trying to be as quiet as I can, maybe comment it a couple of times, but it's kind of funny, because a lot of people came up here and started talking about, you know, why we changed the, the way that we do the town meeting, and why we changed the town meeting, because it was such a, you know, closed-knit group. And they're almost kind of saying that we should do that again. You know, the way we're talking about this is saying, "Let's go, bring it up to the state. Let's make sure this is something that we can throw on the ballot, and then make the people decide." So, the people that are not just in this room, you know, the 20 people that are going to make a decision for us, for the 27,000, 25,000, 27,000 that are in the town, we should, you know, bring this and make sure it, it passes, pass the muster, and then bring it on and say, "Do the, do the townspeople want to make this change?" And let the people that want to vote for it make that decision, instead of a closed little group like this today. That's, that's what I would say.
Okay. Last comment.
Question.
We've been, we've been on this an hour, so last comment.
A question on your process. So, we're having the hearing today. All right, public hearing. Chad suggested making some revisions. If you make revisions, do you have to have another public hearing and start this again? Because now, we're going to have to listen to the new proposal that you want to do?
The way this would work is, is that if we have this public hearing, we decide we're going to send something up, we may, the clock starts ticking on the 60 days. My understanding from what I'm hearing from the town manager is, is that he's going to consult with council. He believes that we could make some revisions while that clock is ticking. When it comes back, there still has to be multiple public hearings. It just doesn't happen. It has to go through more process, more hearings, much like warrant articles and everything else. It's got to go to deliberative, and it still has to go to the ballot.
So, it's not if, if we decide to do it? Okay, so it's not.
Doesn't mean we're going to.
Okay, so, just to clarify, John. It's not public hearing today? They vote, "Yes, we're going to do it. We're going to go up to Concord, make revisions, and then it's on the ballot." There'll be other public hearings, is what you're saying?
Got to come back. It's got to come back, and we've got to talk about it more through the process.
Yeah, as one, as one council member, I want to hear what other people have to say. So, this is not rushing it. I keep hearing rush, rush, rush. There's no rushing at all here. This is going to go, the state's going to decide if we can do it, and then we're going to have more discussion, as it should be. I think some people said in the audience, "We really need to talk about this more." I agree 100%. But I think the, the confusion here is that we're rushing into making decisions for the, for the townspeople. We're not. We're just saying, "Is this something we can do? Pass the muster, sniff test, bring it back to us, and then we'll have plenty of discussions." I want to hear from everybody as much as possible, even before we put it on the ballot.
I understand.
So, that's what we'll do.
And the state may come back and say, eh.
Right. And I understand that. It's just the timing with the budget process, it just is a lot on the plate.
It has to go on the article.
So, what's been difficult about since the change of the charter under default budgeting is, is that it, it takes away that ability we had under town meeting in, in order to really have those deep-level discussions. We have to put two numbers out there. Vote for this one, vote for that one. So, what we've had to do is, it's been a balancing act for, for several years. What we tried to start doing about two or three years ago is like what I call square things up. Start squaring the things up. During those periods of time, we had several things happen. As you'll notice, whenever we hire police, fire, public works, we go to the ballot and we ask the people. It's all about asking the people. "What do you want to do? How do you want to hire?" Well, then what happens is, is we have another 10 people come on the payroll. Okay, now we've got these 10 positions on the payroll. We're carrying them in the budget. We're carrying them in the budget. Expenses, because it's always been a bottom-line budget, the expenses go here, there. We're like, whoa, 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 wait a minute, reel this whole thing back in. Let's start lining things back up. Let's start looking at the personnel. We may possibly go through this process and turn around and say, you know what? We may have open positions in some departments. Maybe what we actually need is a warrant article that says, for these things, if you want these services to continue, and I don't know what the budget committee is going to say tonight. They may say, we need to cut this and cut these services. But if you want these services to continue, you need X number of dollars. That should be the question we should be asking the voters. Is those type of things. That's where I've been trying to drive this budget process for the last two or three years. Problem is, is we got hung up like other governments do in default budgeting. And this whole bottom-line budgeting thing, which is not the easiest thing to manage. So this year, we're trying to square things up. Much like this, more hearings, much like tonight, budget committee sitting up here. Tell us what you want to, what services do we need to give up? So that's how we're trying to do this, if that makes sense.
Yeah, my question was, was just to make sure we're going to have more, another public hearing, not today's public hearing goes up to Concord, or we're going to make, you know, changes to it and then it's going to go on the ballot. We're going to have a public hearing, you said, if changes are made.
And the same reasoning behind why we've had three council meetings this month about budgeting. Want people to get involved. Let's find out what the services are that this community wants.
Well, I think we have great services and I don't want to see any services cut. I just, like I said to you earlier, I think, you know, for the longest time, the can's been kicked down the road. And, you know, they've been using open positions to fund line items that were not funded properly. So fund those. Personally, I would like to see how much that would be for, on the budget.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bouchard, for speaking. So just for clarification, Mr. Malaguti, and with brevity, we'll have another hearing regardless if it's voted yes.
Yes, and I just want you to have my reasoning on this because the council can't move articles to the ballot outside of a hearing, is my understanding.
If there's an amendment, you're seeking counsel, but you believe that we can send that up to the state again, which would require another hearing?
I think there is a reasonably likely, reasonable likelihood of that. I did not anticipate that. But I think the chairman's suggestion is a good one, which is that the statute only requires us to submit at a certain point. It doesn't say anything about changes along the way.
Okay, and I also would agree with Counselor Green's reasoning with that it does put, put the decision, you know, I like the multiple hearings and opportunities for the public comment. I also like the opportunity for the public to make a decision on this and put it in their hands. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to, how do I word this? To adopt the, or to recommend.
So perhaps I can help. I would accept the motion to direct the town manager to move the charter amendment for five-point-seven treasurer's position to the state for review.
So moved.
Does that work?
So moved.
It does, Mr. Chairman.
Well, so that's, I'm suggesting someone make that motion.
That's, that's good. So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
So you're moving the question, you're seconding the question. Okay, understand, all the comments tonight are all very valuable and everything. This is all part of the discussion.
Discussion.
This is not a final decision. This is so that we can start to understand more about how this would work. I have a motion and a second. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Three, one, passes. Accept the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're opposed to closing the public hearing?
Oh, no, that's fine.
Public hearing is closed. All right, ladies and gentlemen, if you want to stay for the budget workshop, the budget committee is going to present to us their questions about the budget, the services I've asked them to look at, or the council has asked them to look at, where we should be looking at things, possible services that we should be questioning or cutting, possible services we may be adding. But this is all yours, Steve.
Mr. Chair. Just a quick question. Well, it's just past eight-thirty now and I have a number of items and there's no way we're going to get through all of them. So my question, so my question to you is, I mean, if I present something, we discuss something as a budget committee, who is going to make a decision that we move forward with that, or I just want to walk out of these doors and at least have somebody saying, I'll take a look at it, I'll make a change? Or come back with recommendations? How can we make that happen?
So you're asking for the council to give you a reaction tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
You all good with that?
Sure.
Yep.
Go ahead.
And my understanding is that if we reduce fifty thousand dollars anywhere, it's a penny savings on the tax rate.
Correct.
That's my understanding.
Yep.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, the finance director, just speaking of financial oversight, stepped out to take an important call on a matter of town financial administration. So he'll be back.
Okay, all right.
All right. Does anybody need a break?
Wish we didn't have to.
You ready to go?
Yes, I am. Just as Mr. Douglas pointed out, the budget committee is an advisory committee. And for that reason, I have collected information from the budget committee. And basically what I'm presenting here is some questions that, to the town council. Anyone want to respond to it? Some options here, maybe we look into a little more of some of these items. The first item is the community services grant. That is a fifty thousand dollar amount that the budget committee is responsible for, looking at the allocation for that. We'd like to make a, we're actually, we're making a recommendation that we cut that by twenty-five thousand. And that either goes back to the budget as a savings, and we take what we've, we've put together the allocations and we just reduce those allocations in half. So that's my, the first item is the twenty-five thousand dollar reduction in the community services grant.
Reaction?
I think it's a great idea since these nonprofits are getting a lot more money from the state due to the gambling. They've all applied for it. They're all getting ten, twenty thousand dollars from the gambling rewards for it. So I think that's a great idea.
I like the fact that they're getting more, but, you know, I think they've been, we've been kind of cutting for years, so can't give us, gives back to the community in a lot, a lot of ways, so I don't, I have to really see the, the distribution of the, of the money for us to see which of the, of the funds would get cut the most. I think there's some really, they're all deserving, but there's some that are much more important to the community than others, if you will.
I do have a question. What is the why behind the cutting by twenty-five thousand? Half a cent on the tax rate?
Well, if we look at it that way, we're going to be a half percent everywhere. I mean, it's just, we start somewhere.
So you're proposing just cutting the community services grant by twenty-five thousand?
Well, that's the first, yes.
Okay.
We've got eighteen. Eighteen items to go through.
Thank you.
Okay, so the answer to number one is, is sounds like it's favorable. Let's take a look at it.
Okay.
Is that how you want answers?
I, I will take a look at it, or is it?
Sounds, it sounds like it's favorable. Let's take a look at it.
All right. All right.
That's what I heard. Did you hear something different?
No, I heard that. I just want to make sure that this, it will happen. Okay.
I didn't hear that, Mr. Chairman.
What, I didn't.
What I heard from the majority of the council was, is that sounds like something that we should, we should do. Let's take a look at it. That's what I heard, right? So you're going to present it to us, saying that this is what it's going to be because you're going to show us what the cut is?
Yes, yep.
Did I hear something? I'm making sure. Did I hear the right thing?
Yeah, you're spot on.
Okay.
Excellent.
All right.
The second one is the legal budget. It would increase a hundred percent from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand, just to understanding of what happened there.
Yes, and Justin could speak to this more.
Okay.
More substantively than I can, but what I can tell you is that we had a, an in-house town attorney model. Attorney Ramsdale was to retire. I was to become the town solicitor. Obviously, I can't do that right now. And so there's been a shift away from that model in favor of retained legal services. I could tell you that the fifty thousand dollars that are allocated for that right now, nowhere close to sufficient to cover the town's legal needs. Mr. Chairman, I would defer to you on this, but I think you well understand the importance of legal services. And it's something that you really, when you need them, you need them. And fifty thousand dollars for a town like us is not going to cut it.
So what we were doing is, is, and Justin will correct me if I get this wrong, is that we had outside counsel for a number of years, ranged anywhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in legal counsel. They negotiated all of our union contracts and everything else. What we moved towards was, was moving the town prosecutor, which was Mike Malaguti, over to town hall. His loaded labor costs would be about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars as the town, the town solicitor. And then we would bring all of what we would call the smaller things into, things that wouldn't go to court. And bring that all in-house. So he cannot legally practice law and be the town manager at the town at the same time. So we need to be able to retain outside counsel, or we'd have to go out and find another town solicitor. We actually did try to go out and find another town solicitor and none of the candidates met the requirements of the, of the staff.
That's right. And we unfortunately, through that process, suffered from the same labor market forces that all of our other positions are experiencing. It was an extremely small pool of folks who, who put in for it and ultimately, we were not successful in filling it.
So in this particular case, we eliminate the town solicitor and it actually costs less to say with outside counsel.
All right, perfect. Third item, obviously overtime has been on a lot of discussions. So I, you know, what I'd like to happen, I guess would be for someone to say, I can look at the overtime. I think we can reduce it by five percent, ten percent, at least something. Can we start with the police department?
Do you want the chief to give his presentation now?
I don't know if it's a, I guess, I guess with the mindset of, I've seen that with the mindset of you present something and just say, here's an area that I think I can maybe do something. Just something. I guess that's what I'm looking for. I mean, I, we're going to talk about the hours and I don't want to spend an hour on this. I just like to figure out where can we spend some time on.
So, so chief.
Sir.
Why don't you, let's go to what is our largest number and start from there. So cat, largest number, category with the largest number that affects overtime. Does that work, Steve?
Yes.
Perfect.
Training seems hard.
Vacation.
Training.
I can start that. So there was a lot of questions last week that were presented by members of the town council and members of the budget committee for me to look at and to work on. For the better part of last week, that's what we have been doing in the police department. Taking a look back at some of the numbers I gave to you folks on that PowerPoint slide. To your point, Mr. Bro, it was, it was training. So I think that's a great question to ask me and I will get right into that for you.
Thanks.
So if you look at the chart that I gave you back in two thousand and eighteen, we were budgeted, or we spent approximately ninety-eight thousand dollars. In FY nineteen, seventy-nine thousand. FY twenty was seventy-three K. We'll get into the self-explanatories with that. FY twenty-one, a hundred and forty-nine thousand. FY twenty-two, a hundred and seventy-one thousand. And year-to-date so far, we're at thirty-six. Now, when we look at those training lines or the increase, and you're probably going to say, why is there a difference there from FY twenty to twenty-two? That's quite simple. Quite simple is our training has to get better. Okay, back when the LEAC in two thousand and twenty, the government mandated that police departments have accountability and they increased the mandatory hours that we are required to put our officers in. Each year, we go to firearms four times a year. So the minimum that we have to do is eight hours per year. Okay, not including firearms and DTs. So we have to do those things no matter what. We can't cut corners there. Every officer has to go through those. When the LEAC improvements came out from the, from the government statewide, one of the issues that had come up was they didn't think that police were trained enough. And to do that, what they mandated, this isn't Londonderry PD thinking of ways to spend money. This was mandated by the governor. So they had said that in two thousand and twenty, going forward, we need to increase it to sixteen hours by two thousand and twenty-one and to twenty-four officers, twenty-four hours per officer by twenty-three. So as you can see there, on FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two, there is the increase in the police officers' training hours. Now, I can say this, this isn't for, for argument. This isn't to scare anybody. We can't cut corners in training. We cut corners in training, it's a liability and it costs the taxpayers a lot of money in litigation. We're not going to do that. What we do do though, Mr. Bro, when we do these trainings, as I pointed out at the last budget hearing, was we do a lot in-house to try to minimize the cost. We can't cut any more corners on, on the training and the professionalism that goes into this agency. Like I had mentioned, we do these things that are called two-by-two-by-twos. They're two-hour trainings. There's three sessions of them. And the officers, we used to, or we would have, sent them to a training class for several days. But in-house now, we all have this login and we watch these videos. We take tests online. So it's like an on-school testing. So the officers do that on duty to try to save on overtime. Now, there's other things that are in here that we, we have to do. For example, give you a quick rundown.
Can I just quickly ask something?
Please.
I guess what I'm getting at is, is the overtime.
Correct.
I understand it's training.
Sure.
Training.
So.
Let's focus on the overtime.
Yes, I'm going to, I can get that to you, sure. So for example, we can't send midnight officers to a midnight school for training. Costs overtime.
Okay.
When we have officers that are going to training for a two-day, three-day, a week-long or a two-week school, we have to backfill those shifts with overtime. Some of these schools or classes that these officers attend, it's travel time, there's hotels, lodging, whatever you want to call it. To be a professional organization costs money. And we, we have historically looked at ways to save and be creative with this question as you're presenting. But just to give you an example, we sent Captain Mark Morrison, he's our Calea manager for the agency. He had to attend massive amounts of training to make us a Calea-certified organization. We looked at canine training for our canine handlers. We have sent, obviously motorcycle schools. We look at training we have to send our SROs to. We send all our female officers to women-in-command. We send our detectives to evidence training for a week. We hire, recruiting goes to hiring best practices applicants. We all, again, a lot of these things cost money. Managing police records, even our records personnel, our dispatchers, everyone in that, every persons in that police department gets training. And these things, as you can tell, as you guys know your police department, by going above and beyond, these things do cost money. But they are still far cheaper than a lawsuit that the town would have to pay out. And this is part of the accountability and credibility that we provide for the community. Because this is what you guys asked to do. You guys ask us to give you the best-trained, most professional organization to represent the town of Londonderry. We cut corners there. We can't, and I can't, say that that will continue. So when you look at those overtime costs, those are for some of them. And again, I can just give you a quick rundown, as I said, about the other lines. FY twenty-three, when that's, or actually it'll be FY twenty-four. So you're, we're probably going to be in line, Mr. Chair, with one hundred and seventy-one to a hundred and seventy-five K in training. Because we're mandated to increase those hours. So again, the mandated hours will be twenty-four. But they have to do firearms training at a minimum of patrol officers getting a minimum of thirty-two mandatory hours a year.
So, so the. Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I apologize. So I understand the needs of training and I understand that, that those costs go up a little bit. But in each of these categories, in sick coverage, in training, and well, not really COVID because that really doesn't, that's going down at this point. But in a lot of these line items, they've doubled, SOU call-out has more than doubled. Your overtime amounts have doubled or better since two thousand and eighteen. So my question is, are those numbers increasing so significant, have they increased so significantly since two thousand and eighteen? Is that because of the lower number of officers on the department, that your, your number of officers were down, so you're getting a bump up in overtime?
Sure, I understand what you're asking.
And the other side of that question is, as you're getting more new hires and you're, as you're getting, I think you're going to be up to sixty-three. If you could get up to sixty-four, sixty-five, could you compromise and have a decrease in your overtime budget to help accomplish those extra numbers?
So, it's a great question and I kind of feel like it's a two-part. So I will back up in my mind here what you had asked me. So the first part, yes. Anytime we have a new officer, they have to go to the academy-like officer, because Stig Leone, he just did, sixteen weeks at a minimum. When they get out, they're in training for twelve more weeks. When they get out, they're in training for twelve more weeks. Now, when they're on training, the only time they get overtime is that they're held over, as we talked about. They're held over for a prisoner transport, uh, an arrest, a call-out, an untimely, whatever the case may be. When they complete their training period, we still have them do additional training going forward. Warrants and complaints, search warrants, um, th- there's other mandatory checklists that they go through in their first three years. They don't get it all at once, for several reasons, like I talked about that bottlenecking before. There's only so many classes that'll come up, so in order for us to get them in there, that takes time. But, to the other point, which was, when someone leaves, and that opens another vacancy in a different bureau, or a different assignment, again, the same thing, we have to train up that next person to take over that role. It's a constant evolution of educating and training, and that way, the PD doesn't stop. And when you mentioned the two thousand eighteen, that's correct. We didn't have the mandates that were put in place in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, and four-twenty-three. However, we could, could, could I institute uh, cutting and given every officer a minimum of thirty-two hours?
I'm not suggesting that at all.
Right, and what I'm saying is, I, I, we, we could, I don't know if that would be the, the best example uh, to cut. But, I, I prepared the PowerPoint to show you why those numbers look the way they do in front of you. And um, I tried to make them as bold as I could see them, but now I really can't. So hopefully, uh, hopefully you guys have a better eyesight than I do. So, real quick, um, here is the overtime projection that we did a look back. Now, wh- when you look at FY eighteen, here's the numbers, they start to increase. They got, you're gonna immediately tell, right there, from FY twenty to FY twenty-two, right? It's almost doubled right there. Which again, if you, if you look at why, uh, counselor, you had asked me, uh, budgeted versus unexpected. That was one of the questions you asked me, right? So, some examples that I'll share, the budget committee and the town council, is uh, budgeted going forward. Things that, again, I've been in office for a couple of months, but uh, I think I got this. So, looking at budgeted, we, we can count on elections, we can count on polls, we can count on now the mandatory training that is required, that we have no choice but to do. Uh, Old Home Day, the VIPs, uh, constant on the common, things like that are budgeted. Some of the things are unexpected, which would be call-outs, um, for either our SWAT team, call-outs for detectives, call-outs for the TAR team, C-I-M-T, um, other investigations, uh, COVID, which was a gigantic cluster for everyone, and then open spots. So open spots, meaning uh, positions that were left uh, due to retirements, uh, or people resigning in lieu of retiring. But keep in mind, that twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-two, also, we were down one and a half to two dispatchers over the course of that timeframe in dispatch. So, hiring overtime for forty to eighty hours a week. You have to have someone answer the telephone, we can't just ask uh, someone to come in and cover the desk, we have to fill that. So those things, much like we talk about, we always talk about, the sworn officer position. But the dispatcher is no different, they go through the same process, the same process, polygraph, you name it, all of it. So we can't cut corners there, but that is an increase too, that we hadn't seen before. We had not seen that increase uh, with, with two vacancies in dispatch. So, to answer your question there, on that, overtime. Now, the next spot we look at, uh, can you go to the vacation coverage, please? Yeah, there you go. So, here's why I thought I'd throw this in here. This right here is a good example of consistency, right? They don't look too crazy, that's probably where we're gonna end up at the end of this fiscal year. So, now, when you look at the sick usage, on the next page, everybody's gonna say, wow, and gasp, and look at that. Well, here's, here's why that is important. Officers and dispatchers, we didn't have the coverage for them to be able to use the plethora of vacation time that they build up. Because if there was no staffing, they get denied time, they can't take it, cause there's no one to cover it. They put it out for overtime, but if nobody takes it, then it gets unfilled, or somebody gets ordered, or someone volunteers. There's, there's a, many mechanisms which, which drive this. But when you look at the sick coverage, you'll know that that's when the whole COVID thing started happening. And I'm proud to tell you that, looking back at the, at the sick coverage, the vacation didn't adjust. Okay? Vacation stayed the same. If we took COVID away, if it didn't happen, I don't have a crystal ball, but I would be willing to bet it'd be similar lines with the vacation. When there's more officers and more dispatchers working, they have the ability to take more time off. What generally happens, and I don't know if you folks all do this, but in our line of work, if you knew you weren't going to get the day off because they couldn't fill it, what do you do? You call out sick, because why? Cause you can't get ordered in when you're sick. So if you know your vacation time is gonna get denied, you call out sick, which increase in sick time, increase in COVID, and when you go to the COVID slide, take a look at that, FY twenties where it all started. So that was the big year, right off the bat. So if you think about how many hours, and I have it in this Excel spreadsheet, that's five feet long, and it's in a two font, but uh, I bet you there was hundreds of hours in that. So, that is why we all sighed and we see the overtime. You have to cover the shift, you have to provide the service for the community that you folks asked us to do. We can't skip on service, we can't skip on staffing. So...
So Chief.
Sir.
I'll wait.
Is there any correlation between if you add more officers, is there any possibility of overtime decreasing?
Did you take a cheat sheet, and you take a peek at this, or what? I knew that was gonna come up, so um, I will get to that in one second, sir, did you want me to answer that?
Chief, my question's the same, alright?
That was exactly what I asked.
This is all great detail. We now understand where the money's being spent and everything else, so I'm gonna put you in a box.
Look forward to it.
Alright, sixty-eight sworn officers, if I have a full complement of officers, how much overtime can I cut?
Well...
Which I think is what Steve's gonna ask if I don't ask it now.
That's what I asked last night, so...
Well, here's what...
Can I cut thirty percent?
Exactly what I asked.
I don't wanna guarantee that, but I will say that...
Well, I'm, I'm just asking, I'm not asking you to guarantee anything, is thirty percent a good goal? I'm putting you in a box, Chief.
That's okay. Um, so, I can answer both of that somehow.
Thank you.
So, knowing that was gonna come up, I had our staffing uh, lieutenant look at that and say, when was the last time that this department was above minimum staffing in all three shifts? And it was March and April of twenty-twenty. That was the last time that we had overage, which also i- is, is a, uh, the mechanism for minimizing the staffing. So if we had uh, two on days, two on afternoons, and one on mid, i- if we had five altogether, fully complement the shifts, and that will reduce the amount of overtime. I, I can't say if it's gonna be twenty-five or thirty percent, but it would reduce the overtime. Cause it's common sense, right? If you have five guys working, and you have to have three by contract to provide the safety for the community, and one person calls out sick, you don't have to hire someone for a shift at three hundred dollars.
Okay. Can I put, bear, can I ask one, one quick thing, bear with me for just one minute? Um, J- Justin, what do four officers cost us? Six hundred thousand?
Roughly, uh, one fifty to one eighty each, so that would be about that.
So we'll call it six hundred thousand? So, I'm, I'm down, how many am I down? I'm down, I'm not me, I'm not me, I, the town. So how, so, so tell me, tell me how many we're down from sixty-eight?
So, we have uh, seventeen working the patrol side, one on workman's comp, and we have five done their backgrounds, but again, to get that complement, those five that are completing their background, three, as I indicated before, are certified, so they will be coming on by or after the first week of December. They'll go through their twelve weeks of FTO, and they should be uh, solo bead officers by March.
Okay.
So, those folks would go, one on days, one on afternoons, and one on mids. So that will give us one above minimum.
That gives you sixty-three total?
Uh, six, let's see.
I'm, I'm just trying to get to a number, sixty, sixty-three total.
Correct.
So I'm five short.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm five short, so that's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars I'm short.
Okay.
Okay? Of that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that I'm short, what I wanna know is, is can I reduce overtime by three hundred thousand dollars if I go to full staffing? Because now I'm at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and I'm on budget for, for people. Yet I've reduced my overtime, what, um, what are we budgeting, what did we budget for overtime last year, Justin?
I had that too, it's eight and change.
So in this current year?
Yeah.
It is a total of seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars.
So that's my three hundred thousand dollars that I'm looking for if I go to full staffing.
And I...
Did, do you understand where I'm going with this?
Sir, absolutely, and I think that if, if we looked at, the reason why I was so excited to show you this, cause I think I figured it out, was if, if you, if you took the difference between the two COVID years, look at where the staffing was at the time prior, look at the vacation, the vacation pretty much stayed in line. The biggest increase in the overtime was due to COVID in minimum staffing. As you pointed out, Mr. Chair, the reduction in personnel creates a larger uh, overtime line. And, much to your point, Mr. Bro, I could, to your point, I could give the officers the minimum amount of uh, training required to, to cut that down. As a department head, I don't know if that's the best idea, to under-train or to give them the minimum. Now, we've heard other people talk today about what other agencies or other towns do and being aligned. We are not anybody else, I don't care two seconds what Manchester does, I don't care what Bedford does, I don't care what Derry does. I only care about the officer that we provide for our community, and I only know the way to do it, and this is what we've done it for twenty-two years that I've been here, is to provide the most amount of training to get them to be the most efficient patrol officer for our community. But to your point, sir, if we were to get staffing increased, I think that if we look back at the FY eighteen, nineteen numbers, I think that tamps it back down.
Yeah, can I, just a visual, just a visual, uh, could you put overtime total up, please? So I think even a visual to what you just said, just so everybody can see that. So the third one down is, if people can't see it in the audience, the third one down is the twenty-twenty. So going from nineteen to twenty, what he's trying to say is that, if you were to look at it, can you bounce to the COVID for one second and go back to the, that? If you look at, at the COVID in twenty-twenty, that's a hundred and sixty-six thousand, just keep that in your mind for a second. You go to overtime totals, you take that away from the eight fifty-three, that's around six hundred thousand. So that, those three lines would be pretty much the same, and that's what I was talking about way back when I asked you the question. If you're fully staffed, can you control the overtime, and that proves that you guys did. And the only reason why this has gone up to, again, take that one hundred the same way, off of two thousand twenty-one, right? It's a hundred and nine off the two thousand twenty-one total. You're still, you're still over ni- at nine hundred thousand, you're still at one million. So you could see as the staffing issue gets wor- worse, your overtime continues to climb. So that, it's in the numbers, the, the, the faction of the numbers, so...
Yeah, so, the, the reason why I wanted to put that out there in this type of format is so, it's easy for me to, well, not easy for me to see it o- on this, so I thought it was easy to present it this way. And, you know, sitting in that office a- and, and going over this, uh, with our assistant Suzanne Hebert, uh, we realized when you look at some of these things and the amount of hours, you're talk, we're not talking forty hours. We're talking hundreds, we're talking thousands of hours of, of extra time that goes into this. One of the things I wanted to point out too, was, you know, the, the training line, as I said earlier, okay? If, if, if I'm instructed by the budget committee, the town council to make cuts somewhere, I'll find it where I have to find it, to be the happy medium. And I, I, I don't think I would have to do that if we're staffed and we get that aligned. I think that will take care of itself, as uh, the councils have pointed out. A couple of other things too, to talk about when it comes to overtime, is uh, Mr. Malaguti, could you hit the uh, Old Home Day one, for example? So, Old Home Day here is, is another area, you can see what happened when we had the COVID year, uh, when that all started. Prior to COVID, uh, FY uh, FY nineteen, and again, in FY twenty-two. So, those numbers were realistic, uh, given, given the state of the country. I think it's fair to say that, and I can say that um, post-COVID, twenty-twenty, current cultural climate across the United States, I think, which increased uh, um, issues in the community nationwide, globally. And when we talk about these things, um, I, I do not say it to, to create fear, but there was a uh, concern for this year's Old Home Day. And it is upon us to, to, to take appropriate action. And, well, I can see that says eighteen thousand and change. I can tell you that Captain Breen, who was sitting over there today, um, spends a tremendous amount of time getting these things together. And organizing them is not for anybody just sitting down at home criticizing what the police does. What I can tell you is that, the amount of hours that I had for Co-, uh, for Old Home Day, that was put into there, in one of my sheets. Thank you. That many hours. If we can, if we can click over to the polls one, real quick too, please?
I'm sorry, three thirty. Thank you.
Overtime. Hours.
Well, three hundred and thirty, three hundred and thirty total hours, not all of our overtime.
Yeah, right, so if we can hit the um, the election or the poll slide real quick. Okay, great, thank you. So we look at this one too, you can tell which years are the election years that are coming up. So, let's talk about uh, the year-to-date. Year-to-date one, that we just had, was roughly eighteen thousand and change, nineteen thousand dollars. So, uh, I will share that we, as an agency, the men and women of your police department, some ordered, some volunteered, wanted to work it. Uh, we put in a total of three hundred and nine, three hundred and nine hours to provide security and safety for the polls for our twenty-seven thousand-plus citizens. And when we look at that, I've, I reallocated, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, I, eight, nine, ten. Ten of those gentlemen were actually on duty, yes, being paid by you to work. They were reassigned to that. So ten. The rest of them were all overtime. So, we, we do mandate our overtime, all hands on deck, you've heard me say that before. And that's what we do, we've done this historically. It's never been called into question if, if we misappropriate or, or don't properly position ourselves to, to, to save. We do it all the time. COVID ones is where, as the budget committee, you guys probably see that and, and have a shock. But that's why I wanna present to you those increases. And lastly, on some of that overtime stuff, as uh, the vice chair asked, the other examples of unexpected, snowstorms. Some, some years we get pounded, some years we don't. VIP visits, uh, we're, we're very fortunate that Londonderry leads the way in the political world in New Hampshire. Everybody comes to Londonderry.
Has something to do with the airport.
Well, that too. But these folks, they come down, as you know, they, they march in our parades, they go to Max, they have events. Uh, Senator Ted Cruz was uh, here in Londonderry uh, maybe two months ago. Anytime a dignitary flies into the airport or is traveling through our community, we have to provide security. And that's what we do, because we're a professional organization with a well-reputation i- i- in this whole political scheme.
Chief, is there any way to make the campaigns pay for that?
Well, um, sir, with all due respect...
I'm just throwing out there.
Should we, should we tell them?
Oh.
Yeah, we, we've tried that for, for a couple of decades, and they don't give us anything.
Should we tell them about the most recent one, with, with, with the former president?
Well, I would love to, but uh, I, I think I'm gonna try to speed through these.
We'll give you, we'll give you the short version. We all went up to visit with the Secret Service, and they brought the White House staffer over, and we asked them who we give the bill to. What'd they tell us, chief?
Yeah, good luck with that.
So the answer is, is no.
Right.
Now, in all fairness, some campaigns will pay, so we ask everybody. But, the lion's share of them, no.
Yeah, we, I don't think, uh, Suzie, have we ever received a check from any uh, VIP detail? So a- a- as you folks know, Suzie has been here longer than anyone in this room. Which is, which is awesome for me, because without her, these last several months, you guys wouldn't have anything for me other than confusion. So, uh, Su- Suzie has been working here for close to forty years, I believe, and she'll probably kill me later for saying that, but this...
Started when she was ten.
She, with, without her help, th- this wouldn't be possible. So...
So Chief, so let's uh, let's, you know, he's got, he's got eighteen more questions.
I know, I'm trying, you know, eighteen more for me.
And listen, and then, not all for you.
No, just trying to figure out, can you come back to us and say, a hundred thousand dollars I can cut? I'll find something.
A hundred thousand, sure, let's, let's do it. You offered a hundred, I'll take that.
Something.
Mr. Chairman, and just before we send him away too, I just wanted to point out, you know, we got a chart this mo- this morning, Chief, thank you very much, comparing this year or past, uh, past expenditures. And the thing that stuck out for me is... And the thing that stuck out for me is we're two years into twenty twenty three, and if I multiply that times six to get the forecast for the rest of the year, we're going to be like nineteen percent ahead of what we spent last year. Well, and that was troublesome to me.
Sure. And I I think, sir, that if if we, again, if we went back and looked at, this is where that project, that five year look back or these projections can get kind of tricky because the covid stuff kind of throws us all off. And where the increases were so significant, it it's kind of hard to take that unless we what we did would take the 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 average prior to, take the overtime, the the increases in the covid. And then from FY twenty two to current and then for FY twenty four, I I think we're going to look back and go, wow, that was a stretch and and not due to poor management by the police department.
And I guess my other comment is twenty twenty four is an election year. Do we have enough money budgeted for VIP visits?
So again, and I think that also is one of those, depending who's coming to town. I I don't want to say names, but one of the former presidents drew a massive crowd and required us to really increase our our personnel.
Boy, I kind of hope we see a lot of candidates myself, so.
We we generally, I think, see a fair amount.
So the so the difference is, Lynn, is when Air Force One lands?
Yep.
That requires a whole different set of security versus if someone is just a candidate.
Understand.
And and those people who come who are just candidates, they do get bills. And as Susie has said, we don't generally get paid, but they do get bills. The White House, the White House actually wouldn't give us anybody's name to give it to. And and that's not just the past president, it's been multiple past presidents.
So, Mister Chair, at what point, where are we now? Can we ask for three hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, a hundred thousand, or what is?
Are you asking me for a suggestion?
And asking you for, yes, suggestion of.
I I, you know, so from this whole police piece has been sort of a process that I'm trying to work through. For me personally, I think we may need some sort of, you know, first responder type of a of a bond. So here's what I struggle with is the voters told us to hire more police, the voters told us to hire more fire, the voters told us to hire more public works. So the voters have told us what level of service they want. So that they're not telling us that they want less people working here. We can't find as many people working here. So as we try to square up and balance this budget, I only have a couple of choices under default. I can put out a budget that's a half a million dollars over default, and then it doesn't it doesn't pass because the people who are voting for it unlikely are going to vote for a half a million dollars over default because we're not explaining to them why. Or we can go through a process of saying, why I keep asking for the numbers is, is I'm trying to figure out what's the number in first responders that we need to be able to square the budget up. If it if it's three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, whatever the number is, and put that on as a separate warrant article that says, this is a first responders warrant article. This is the money we need to be able to continue with the staffing that we have and tell the voters why. Now, I don't even know if that's a good idea, but this is the process I'm going through in my head. That's why I tried to get to those numbers is is that if he can cut his overtime by three hundred thousand, by me being able, by by the town being able to properly staff the police department, then we can solve the overtime problem much like we did in the fire department ten years ago. So that that's what I'm thinking about. That's a long answer to your question. If he's willing to commit to go back and look at a hundred to three hundred thousand dollars and be able to see if that's possible, and this suggestion I might be making is possible for the council to discuss, I don't know. But that's that's where I'm at personally. I don't know the rest of the council. I'm sure they have a point of view as well.
Exactly why I brought it up. How much money can we have to put towards the the offices that could potentially, I mean, look at, go go back to the vacation coverage for a second? I mean, what I was what I was what I was saying, chief, I love calling you chief, by the way. It it's it's there. I mean, you know this is going to happen every year. We know that we can we can bring it. And I'm I'm not suggesting we should get sick. We're we're down four officers right after the people that we've hired to come on. I'm not suggesting going five or six, but I was saying that sometimes in the world of scheduling, that you do add an extra person because you could cover that. And now you're talking you're talking about one hourly rate instead of one and a half hourly rate. So the town would benefit by saying that person's going to get paid single. You know, thirty bucks an hour instead of forty five bucks an hour, as an example. So that's that's.
And and just real quick, I I'm sure you guys know, but I I think I have to say it. For those of you who don't know, for example, the Monday through Friday employees, much the command staff, myself, other captains. If they're out sick, we don't hire a lieutenant or a captain to cover it. We don't have any extras. Detective sergeant, if he's out sick, records clerks, dispatchers, we have to, patrol personnel, we have to. Those are the half twos that we have to provide. So anytime anytime those things come up, we have to fill with overtime.
Yeah.
But again, as we've said several times here, if we can get those staffing numbers to increase and hold steady, we should be able to commit to a reduction of that sick overtime, which was caused mostly by covid and minimum staffing.
Yep. So and just to close this up, in two thousand twenty three, seventeen, over seventeen thousand hours in overtime.
Which one are you looking at, sir?
The chart that was given out, I think.
Oh, I can't see that either. Okay. Which one you said, two thousand?
Twenty three, seventeen thousand of overtime hour.
Twenty three?
Sorry, twenty two.
Okay.
Internet my glasses.
Twenty two covid?
That's not just total, that's.
That's total, everything. Seventeen thousand hours.
Oh, oh, hours.
Hours.
Yes, so.
Divide that by, Justin, two hundred and eighty hours for full time?
Yep.
Average?
Yep.
That's eight FTEs, just in overtime. Just just numbers like that just pop out and when you have seventeen thousand in overtime hours.
That's what I'm saying.
Eight FTEs.
Yep.
Line twenty five that you're looking at. So now you see why I can't see that.
It's like five, two font.
Gotcha. Is this the right spreadsheet that we're looking at?
I.
No, it's a different one. Justin provided this one.
Just the one I provided last week.
Oh, that's that's, that's just the covid number, though?
It's everything. It should be everything.
Seventeen hours.
Seventeen thousand overtime.
Oh, seventeen thousand. Gotcha. Okay.
Just that that's what I'm pointing out. I think it's we're all saying is that that's a large number of FTEs that that makes up.
So chief, the question is, is that, you know, what do we need to do to reduce overtime and get back to proper staffing? And 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 that's really where we're, that's where we're, no one, no one's looking to cut officers on the street.
I I understand that. And and, you know, it's selfish for me to say this, but what I what I would like to see happen is our agency be able to get above those minimum staffing needs.
Got it.
Because it it's it's a need for the men and women that provide service for you folks and which allows them to take more vacations and spend time with family. And I I do believe that, you know, we we can minimize the amount of overtime for sick if we're staffed, because when people are forced to work doubles, they have to take time off somewhere else. So I really do think that we could get a handle on that. And again, I I just want to make sure, this is not a mismanagement of a department head. This is an unfortunate situation that's created.
Very clear.
The hole that we're in.
Yes.
Very clear.
On the end of this screen, we just need to figure out how to fix it once and then go forward.
Like now that you have, now that you have the four, four or five coming on, right?
Yes.
Hopefully, we'll get more. But what is that four and five represent as far as relief to that that over expenditure?
It's significant, yeah.
Yeah, what is that number? So that and I don't know if Justin's somebody that can help you with that number or you can do it yourself. I just, that's what we're looking for. So if we said, throw that out there, like you said, two hundred thousand dollars, we could take that line and fund it properly and move that two hundred thousand dollars to fund something else, like additional officers or whatever else.
The problem is, is we got two more retiring this month, and we need, we actually need six more officers on top of the six we already have.
It's it'll it'll be a balancing act for the next year. And again, like we have said before, in in most lines, or or most professions or jobs, you can quit in two weeks. It takes us up to a year to get that person, if they're non certified, up and running to help out. And and as you have pointed out many times, we take only the best certified officers that we can find to bring to our agency. And again, that is a three to four month hiring process and a three month training, and then they are a relief to the men and women of the police department.
Thank you for the notes. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just want to point out that seventeen thousand, that includes the dispatch as well, which I believe Kim has stated was well short last year.
Yeah, it's it's all driven from.
Yep. But I just wanted that seventeen thousand was not just officers.
All this overtime.
Listen, we we want our people to have a work life balance. We just need to figure out how to get there.
Exactly. Yeah, that's that's the other part of it that, thank you, John, for saying that. It's the other part of it that came up a lot in my brain was that, you know, we're talking a lot about finances and dollars, but you started talking, describing, you know, the force overtime and people that have already committed to something, hey, you know what, I'm gonna, I I want to get that overtime, you know, it's part of the negotiations, a certain amount of overtime that each officer has to get. That's great, but I've already done that, I already signed up for this, and all of a sudden I have to stay over.
Right.
And you have to call that, you know, because I've done that in the past, not to be a police officer, but I've done that with my family saying, I just can't leave, I'm sorry. And there's a big party going on.
Yep.
That hurts. And that doesn't always help when you when you.
It's not, it's not easy being on that phone call with your spouse, but it it is par for the course, and it's what the men and women do every single day. And if I could just give you a two second update, last time we spoke at town council meeting, we were asked if there was a way that I could monitor or track the mandatory or forced mandated overtime. So my brothers at the fire department were very, very gracious and helpful, and they shared with us what they use. And we've set up a demo. We think it's going to work for our needs, and we're gonna, we're gonna take that thanks to them and run with it. So we will have a better tracking mechanism for that going forward. So thank you for challenging us to to look into that. And thank you to the fire department for sharing their little hidden treasure.
And that should be a goal of the council. I'll speak for one of us, to help you guys, both in fire and police, to try to eliminate, and it's impossible, eliminate force force overtime like that as much as possible.
Okay. Anything else for me?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you so much.
And if I could, just say happy Thanksgiving to all you folks and enjoy it with your family.
Thank you.
Same to you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Steve, number four.
Fire department.
I'm 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 keeping track.
Fire department, overtime.
Yep, same thing.
Same thing.
Numbers, numbers large this year, too.
Chief O'Brien, Chief O'Brien brought his glasses.
So I just just want to point out again, Chief O'Brien, I just want to point out from what Justin provided, twenty four thousand three hundred and nineteen hours for two thousand twenty two in overtime. Divide that by two hundred and eighty hours, that's eleven point six FTEs.
So fire work on forty two hour schedule, so it's two thousand one hundred eighty four, so it's eleven point one, but.
Okay, eleven point one.
Same thing, but.
Eleven FTEs in overtime only.
So we are currently six positions low. So I'll give you an example for last year closing for FY twenty two. We were three hundred and three thousand dollars over in the overtime for the firefighting line, but we were three hundred and four thousand dollars under in the salary line. So the people that we were out without, we were hiring to make that minimum staffing for, basically washed out for having the right and number of people there to begin with. So when, and I can answer this wholeheartedly, when we fill the positions that we have low, it will definitely cut off me.
Okay.
It always does.
Yeah. That's hard to cover, too, right? Regular salary to cover all of the overtime?
Yeah.
Because you're saying time and a half versus regular time, so.
It is, but I mean, we got rid of a lot, as all you know, we got rid of a lot of our senior staff. So a lot of these new recruits that are coming in are making a lot less. So the overtime cost is not as much, is not, are not as much as they were, you know, five years ago for the staff that we had.
So we have what, chief, about three hundred years of experience?
Yeah, if not more, if not more. We don't have, let's put it this way, within the last, I'd say, three years, we've had more years of experience leave the department than we have currently on the force altogether.
So chief, you say you're you're six bodies down, if you don't mind me phrasing it that way. And how many of those are in the pipeline?
So we just had eight or nine interviews last week. I got five of them coming to me on the thirtieth for the chief's interview. Out of those five, I'm expecting probably three will make it through that process. It's usually, it's usually like a three for, three for five ratio, three make it through, two do not. There's another interview process set up probably the second week in December with another eight individuals. So I'm hoping to get them in for chief's interviews probably before the first of the year.
Okay, so same question we gave Chief Bernard. If if Chief Bernard thinks that when he gets his numbers up, he could cut his overtime budget from anywhere to a hundred to three hundred K. Let's say a hundred and fifty is a reasonable number, and I'm just spitballing here. Could you do the same thing, cut your overtime budget from a hundred to a hundred and fifty K?
We have. We have.
Have already.
Well, we have since two thousand thirteen because I was in the same boat that Chief Bernard was in when I started this position in two thousand thirteen. It was a disaster.
I mean, let me, let me explain the way I'm looking at this. So it seems like Mr. Malaguti has a has a plan for us to propose a a budget that's lower than the default budget so the town actually approves our budget and we can correct some of these line item problems. That's my understanding. In order to achieve that, he's freezing four police positions, which is a total of about six hundred K, maybe a little more. Right? So I'm going through this, and I think Steve's in the same boat here, and I'm saying, okay, we need to find six hundred K in cuts so that we can not freeze these four police positions and still achieve what Mr. Malaguti is trying to do by setting a budget that's less than default.
So can I correct?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Please correct me, yes. If I'm not understanding. There's multiple ways to look at it. You're on the right path. Go ahead.
I just want to comment that that this has been a misconception and I, the wording, I'm just trying to, it was much better wording that was used the other day, but the freezing of it, in my understanding, is that all we're not stopping that, those positions, we're not eliminating those positions. We're just taking the dollars. In other words, we know right now it's going to take us a year to get to those, even if we hide them, right? It's going to be a year to fill those four positions. So we're taking the dollars, move them to other line items because we know we're not going to be able to spend that money. It's still open, it's just, it's just completely for for next year, you know, when we when we know we're going to be able to fill it, we can then do another budget for next year when we're sitting here again in a year, hopefully, that we can fulfill those dollars. So that that's all we're doing is repositioning for the for the lines that actually will be spent instead of lines that won't be.
So, Mister Vice Chairman, you you got it exactly right, which is that this is a a a two step process. It's a two year process at a minimum. I think it's going to take longer than that to reinforce or to to address the the issues that we have in default. But Mister Cassidy, you're exactly right that we need to find the money within the existing budget. I mean, let's be honest. And in order to get these chronically underfunded lines right sized in default, we do need to find that money somewhere, and and we're proposing to do that by freezing, but not eliminating the police positions. And as as evidence that we're not eliminating them, I would, because, and this isn't a anything that's come up tonight or that you're suggesting, Mister Cassidy, or that I've heard suggested here tonight, but it has been suggested in the past, you know, that we're just slashing these positions from the budget. Not only, not only are we not doing that, but it would frankly not be a very good idea to do that. You can see I've got highlighted here the the police budget that we're proposing, the town manager's proposed police budget, which is actually a hundred and seven thousand dollars over default. And that is mainly due to contractual increases that have already been ratified by the voters. I would also note that there is a warrant article that will propose to ratify the tentative agreement between the Londonderry Police Employees Association and the town, and we're carrying that at about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now because we haven't fully costed it out. But when, you know, altogether, we're we are proposing increases, not decreases to the police line. That being said, we are able to take those savings and reinforce those lines in default while still preserving Chief Bernard's ability to hire up those positions if he thinks he can do it. We're not slashing them from the budget, but we can budget for them differently because we're not projecting that they're going to be filled in FY twenty four. I think that the chief can fill a majority of those positions in FY twenty four, but frankly, if he's able to fill eleven, twelve positions in one year, that would be a small miracle. That being said, it's it's there. If if that, you know, becomes a reality, the finance director and I will work with him to make sure that we can hire up. But the primary effort this year is to address those lines in default because we're only going to get one chance to do it. And, you know, we've preserved the issue for future years about what what is an appropriate number for total police staffing. But for this year, we're just budgeting for those positions differently. We're not slashing them. And I would ask the finance director to correct me if I've gotten any of that wrong.
Nope, everything I've heard with this is exactly correct. We're looking at this year as we've been told and as we know, it takes longer than two weeks to get someone on board. We're assuming with the retirements and natural attrition, everything else, we're going to have four positions that we may have in the pipeline that won't start until. that we may have in the pipeline, that won't start until the end of next year. We're leaving those in there, and I've told Chief Bernard, I've told Mike, that should we find the qualified candidates that meet these standards, the Londonderry Police Department believes, I will work with him to ensure that that is not why we are not hiring them.
So, the, so if the positions get frozen, and if it's all four, and Chief Bernard gets to, gets a, a officer that can come on and bring him up into those positions, or in, into a number that affects those positions, you can move money from the overtime budget and other stuff to make that work, is what you're saying?
Or, or, we can put a warrant article out that says, for fire, police, and I consider public works part of first responders, is that, I'm not gonna have somebody for an entire year. The problem with the way we budget is, we budget what's called default budgeting. So, I'm trying to search for a number, and I think the number's somewhere between three and four hundred thousand dollars, and I'm gonna ask the voters to basically, you know, fund what's gonna be about half the year for some of these positions. And then that would become part of default going forward, and I'd be able to square up my lines. But I want to ask the voters if that's okay with them. I'm not saying we're gonna do this, but that's something I'd like to talk about, once we get through this part of it.
If we do that, if we put that on the ballot, that, you know, three or four hundred thousand dollars to, for that first responder, whatever you wanna call it, what happens if that doesn't pass?
Then you don't get to do it.
And it's.
Then you have to do what we're talking about within the budget.
And default's the default, right?
Default's the default.
This is above the default.
Right, what you need to do.
This would be money above the default.
So, the thing we're doing right now is still really good. I mean, we're all working within that default number, right? So, it's all really good conversation, but this would be above and beyond, so that if they want to fund it, the way we think we should fund it, then they can vote on that.
Basically telling the voters, look, we need more money for first responders. This is the reason why. If you agree, approve this, and we will have more money going forward. We're not looking to hire more bodies, but we need to have more funding. And I'm not sure of the mechanism, how to do that, but I want to be able to communicate to the voters, this is the situation we're in. If, if that makes sense. Yes, Tim?
Maybe this is a question for Mike, it covers the police and the fire, since we're talking about personnel. We're getting rid of the overtime, or we're gonna reduce the overtime, hopefully with these people coming in, but we're taking the existing employees we have now, let's say, just say four and four, whatever. We're not hiring them, so we're gonna use that money to offset other costs, to right-size. Seventeen thousand dollars for the police building is like, yeah, that's gone in a month with the repairs they need. So, if we're gonna right-size that, it's gonna be higher to catch up than it would be on an, on an annual basis, if they funded it correctly. Let's say it takes forty thousand a year, but it's gonna be eighty just to get it to there.
Right.
To fund every year. So, we're taking the salaries to move it for like, those catch-up things. The question I have, are we gonna leave that, let's say it's seventeen, it should be thirty-eight, whatever it is? We're gonna leave that at right-size maybe, or? Because I'm trying to understand when you're right sizing.
Yes.
We're gonna right-size that, we're taking it from salaries to fix that, but then salaries are also covering overtime, but as we hire people, those should come down. It's gonna be a lot longer for the police chief, because he's in, he's where Darren was years ago. So, I'm thinking John's about right, but I, I came up with half a million, instead of three million, to kind of catch us up, because we're, we're not balancing, we're, we're behind, so, I mean, are we looking at trying to catch up in one year, two years, for all that stuff we're behind, for right-size?
So, half a year. It's half a year, right?
So, Tim, what I'm saying is, is I'm only asking for half a year, it's worth the money. So, I'm really asking for, if you double that, that's what I'm asking for in the default.
So, so, so you, you've also, I mean, so you raised a couple of good points. One is, you've identified the, the balance that we're trying to strike here, or the timing issue, I guess, that we're trying to, to strike here, which is that we happen to have this condition where we have twelve unfilled positions. We, we don't think that the police can hire those positions all up in FY twenty-four, and that creates an opportunity. The opportunity is, we have money within our budget that we can reallocate to lines that frankly have been neglected for years. Once we do that, those lines become part of default going forward. And the reason for that is, that the starting point for the default budget is last year's appropriation. If we're appropriating those lines where they should be, that carries forward. And so, it, it sort of prevents, it, it, it takes care of itself. It prevents us from being in this position where, you know, the default budget doesn't evolve, because we've got that solid base that we're, we can build on from there.
My concern is, once we do that, that next year the default comes up to be about four hundred thousand dollars above this year's default, and people are gonna be panicked like, where did that come from? Well, we right-size these accounts, but we also hired these six new people for the openings that we had. Now, it saves some in overtime, but you're still got that four hundred thousand dollar jump above default from the previous year. And I'm just wondering what that number is.
So, that's why I want to ask the question to the voters, because default is imperfect math, in my, in, in my opinion. What, what he's basically saying is, is if I right-size all these other numbers, and I still leave the staffing where it is, I actually still carry that salary number forward after I've right-sized these numbers, so I'm actually bringing it forward that way. What I'm saying is, is I'd rather ask the voters for the money versus doing default budgeting, I'll call it, which I don't necessarily agree with, how the statute reads about that.
Yeah, because people aren't gonna like default going up four hundred thousand.
Well, this is my, this is my whole problem with default budgeting, is it's, it's, you know, it, it doesn't, it, it doesn't make, it doesn't follow general accounting principles.
Now, if we didn't hire, if we didn't fill all those positions, and we have six open this year, four open next year, two open next year, it doesn't become as extreme, but the default still jumps every year considerably, maybe two hundred thousand, or, or whatever it is. I don't know what the numbers is, but.
So, well, the, for, for personnel lines, the def, the default is only increasing by, would primarily be contractual items. And so, you, you will tend to see a steady increase, just based on the fact that none of our contracts are going down over time. But I don't know that I would say it's, it's going to be extreme year after year after year, just based on, on that factor.
I've kind of added in the insurance and all the other stuff to default, too, you add that.
Sure.
That's gonna increase it some.
Yeah, Tim, your assumptions aren't wrong. It's, it's the way default budgeting is done, and i- it's really a law that needs to be revised by the legislature.
I just see some shock in the next three years that people might get hit with, if our timing doesn't balance out.
Well, that, I mean, that's a good point, but don't forget that default is going up a million and a half this year. And so, there are ways to mitigate that, and we've suggested some ways to mitigate that. For example, sharpening our pencils with respect to the separate warrant articles that we're proposing. We've been very conservative in that, in that way. Some of the department heads are probably not all that happy with Justin and me, because we, we've cut pretty close to the bone on the trust fund articles. But we think that that's important, because we are already seeing those, you know, increases to default that we just don't have any control over.
I'm worried about the, most of the maintenance trust funds not passing.
Right, right. That's right, and that, and we've factored that in by asking for less or not, you know, asking for a total package that we think is, is modest and, and passes the sniff test for, for the average voter. But it's, that's a concern, is if you go in with these, you know, what you, what you want, or what's ideal, in a bad year, everything's gonna fail.
Okay. Let's go, more questions.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm wondering, I've got some more overtime related to the building department, and so I'm wondering if we could just, in general, everyone look at their overtime, find some place to cut it, all right?
Gotcha.
Next one, the, during the last, I think it was Saturday's meeting or something like that, we had someone mention that for the library, they're looking to hire another staff member. Why can't, we're asking, let's look at some of the programs that are there, just to see how heavily some of those programs are. Would cutting any of the programs eliminate the need to hire another staff member?
Okay, can you guys propose that question to the, to the, to the library, please?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And find out what they say?
And I had, I wanted to add to that a little bit, if that's okay? I know you're looking at, at the police department, and those positions are available to be frozen, but when I was looking through the book, there are eight full-time staff members at the library, and nine part-time staff members at the library, correct me if I'm wrong, Justin. And with the assumption that each one of those part-time staff is about a thousand hours a year, that comes up to a little over twenty-five thousand hours of employee hours at the library. And again, by my probably rudimentary math, I have the library being open a little over three thousand hours a year, three thousand one hundred and twenty. That puts eight full-time staff in the library on any shift theoretically. I know there's probably some out for sick, or vacation, or whatever, but arguably, you go in the library on any given day, there's gonna be eight staff in there to help you, and I think that's cool, and I'm a teacher, and I should be speaking for the library. But on the other hand, that also seems a bit excessive, when that's probably more police officers than we have on the street, on any of those shifts. So, when we're looking at, you, you asked me to come back with cuts, with things, you asked the budget committee to come back with hard cuts, and that's what I, that's what I see, that where, where overspending is on a extraordinarily well-staffed library, let's put it that way.
So, so the question I'm asking you is, is what services, everybody hates the word cut, okay?
I know, yeah.
Sorry, my bad.
So, and, and I'm not saying you're bad, but I'm saying, let's be, let's be clear to the community, services to be eliminated. Is, you know, so that they, I'm not, I'm not cutting, if I'm cutting a person, what, what service does that affect? And that's a question for the librarian, I don't know the answer to.
That's right, yeah, unfortunately, I can't speak to that, but I.
It's out there. All questions are, all questions are fair.
Yep.
Can we look into that?
I, I will ask the, the library director to.
Can you ask Darren to come and see us?
To come and, and, and present on that, absolutely.
It might just be which programs, you know, they find that, well, the turnout's not so great, you know, stuff like that, and.
Well, she may come back.
It's a fair question.
Yeah, okay.
She may come back and say, no, I can't, or she may come back and say, yes, I can, so let's ask her.
All right. Rest is gonna be quick, I promise everyone. It's, it's gonna be yes or no, or something like here, that you can respond to. But this one has to do with the ambulance services or EMT to neighboring towns, can, what do we charge, and do we, can we charge more? Is that an option?
Is this ambulance services?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
The chief stepped out for a moment. So, ambulance services provided to other towns, we charge the patient the same that we charge the residents. Having said that, we receive far more mutual aid for ambulances than we give. Today alone, we had two ambulances, two or three ambulances? Two. We had a Wyndham ambulance and a Merrimack ambulance in town, because we were so busy. We also did at least two or three staffing recalls? Three. Because we were so busy, we, we didn't have anybody, we said, all you all come back, and we had a couple people. So, we give far less mutual aid for ambulances than we receive.
Okay.
If, no, no, I, I, it's a really good question. So, the question over time has been, how much do we charge for an ambulance? Because as far as I'm under the impression, we can't charge more for, less for a resident than for a non-resident. And that's where the dilemma comes in, is do we charge more overall, because people will have the ambulance less? Or do we have more of it in our budget, and charge a little bit?
So, let me rephrase.
Yep.
Do we break even on the ambulance services, do we make money?
I would say we do not break even, but we do bring in money.
Okay, how much is, we charge about, anywhere, I'm trying to remember, anywhere between eight hundred and eleven hundred dollars?
Probably eight, yeah.
I'd say roughly around that. What happens is essentially, we budget for six hundred and twenty-five to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ambulance revenue, which.
Write off about a third.
But that's, I'm talking just cash we bring in, that's what we plan on. That right there is about thirteen cents off the tax rate. Now, if you were to actually look.
About a third.
What?
We write off about a third. We, we, we bill about a million, and we bring in six hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I thought you were saying we write off a third of that, six fifty.
No, we write off a third of that, of, of the, what we bring, of what we bill.
It's either, it's either written off, or Medicare adjustments, things of that nature, that are out of our control.
And we do have a lot of Medicare patients, or Medicaid Medicare, where there's no, no negotiating with them at all. But having said that, every year, we, we look at our rates as well, and we're gonna come to you probably in January, and look at what our current rates are versus what Medicare, Medicare had a eight or a nine percent of increase overall, so we're gonna try to move that along, but it, it, it does hurt people at some point, too. There are a lot of people that pay for their own ambulance either directly or through a health plan.
Deputy Chief, what does the private ambulances charge up in Manchester?
So, if Manchester comes to Londonderry, they'll charge a Londonderry patient about three thousand dollars for the same ambulance. They'll charge a Manchester resident, because of a contract with Manchester, far less than that. That's one of the many reasons we don't use AMR for our backup ambulances. We've had people outrageously charged by them.
Let me ask you a question.
Yeah, so when, when you think, come back with rates?
So, in January, we'll come back with rates. Part of the charter says that we reevaluate the rates every year.
Okay.
If I, I'm sorry, counselor. Just a question for the finance director, so if we were to come back and be in a position to project higher ambulance revenue, that would not affect the budget at this point in time, is that correct?
So, if we were to be able to project higher than that six fifty that we currently budget for, it, it would increase our revenues, which would decrease the tax rate, however, the actual budget itself would not be adjusted. You would still see that, the increase that we currently have, it's.
And then any delta over what we project and what we collect goes into next year's general fund, general fund, right?
It goes into the UFP, correct, assuming we hit all the other revenue targets.
Thank you, Deputy Chief, I appreciate that you said that you're gonna reevaluate, and I know it's per charter, but I also appreciate that was one of the questions, if, you know, we're appropriately billing. With that, may I ask if we could please look at some of our other surrounding communities?
Yep.
To see what their firefighter medic model, what they're, that have the same firefighter EMS model, that is billing for their EMS as well?
Yep, so, in, in general, there's a BLS billing, and there's an ALS billing. Until with the last year, all we did was ALS. We billed some at BLS, because that's what Medicare says. This year, we started running BLS ambulances, because we can't provide enough paramedics. And over the years, the chief has kind of held positions for paramedics, hoping to, to fill them. So, the five candidates we just looked at and move on, all of them are basics. The absolute.
EMT basics.
EMT basics, a really good level of care, but it's truly not advanced life support. We're not able to find paramedics, we're sending paramedics, one paramedic to school this year, we'll see her graduate in a year from now. Our budget, we, we asked for additional money to send more people to paramedic school, that's a solution two years down the line for us. Unfortunately, it's, the market is horrible. AMR is paying thirty-five, forty dollars an hour for, for paramedics.
So, will you be willing to consider that the other, like departments, what their, like similar rates are, so that if we're above them, I mean, it'd be good to know, but also if we're below?
I don't believe we are above very many of them.
Okay.
We've been in the lower tier, but it's been a decision, who pays for the ambulance? And it's, it's not our decision.
Right.
It's, it's your decision on how much of the cost the ambulance goes to the, the, the consumer. And we do get a lot of people going, I don't know if I can afford this ambulance, so there's a mechanism for that as well.
Right. Thank you.
But you, you don't want the person debating whether to call nine-one-one.
Correct.
Saying, I don't know if I want to call the ambulance.
Yep.
And, and just to be perfectly clear, if you call an ambulance right now, and we don't transport you, we don't bill you. So, we will, if we stay there for an hour, helping you call your relatives, maybe somebody else takes you to the hospital, you don't get a bill for that. You only get a bill when you get in the back of the ambulance and go to the hospital with us. So, don't feel that you can't call for, for nine-one-one, and you're gonna get a bill, just like a fire. You have a house fire, we don't bill you at all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Chief.
All right, next question.
All right.
The only one smart one to wear PJs here was Jen, says, she's here for the night.
I don't want to go past ten. Mechanic services for departments, can we consolidate those?
Repeat the question?
We, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, repeat the question?
Mechanic services, so for repairs, can we consolidate across departments, is that possible? And negotiate better rates?
So, if I, oh, I, so, with respect to the.
So, what he's saying is, is that we have all these services for mechanical. So what he's saying is, is that we have all these services for mechanical services across all the different departments? Can we get a better rate by combining everything and working with one vendor or something along those lines? Is that the question?
Yep. Or in-house.
We have talked about an in-house mechanic in the past.
I mean, certainly it stands to reason, and it's something that I think we should, we, it's a good idea, we should look into, I don't know what your, your thoughts are on that, Justin.
It is, one of the issues is some of the vehicles we have have to be maintained by certain places.
By lease.
Are we talking about, uh, like HVAC mechanical or vehicle?
Oh, no, no, vehicle.
Vehicle, okay.
So, a mechanic that works on the fire trucks doesn't necessarily work on.
Correct.
The police cars, so we can't really bundle those together. Um, I know that typically the fire apparatuses and everything will go to the same place.
Okay.
Um, is almost a bundling type deal where they're able to benefit us because they know they have additional coming, same with the police fleet. Um, and DPW, depending on the vehicle, again.
Yeah.
You don't wanna send it to an unlicensed.
No, it makes sense, I think we're just saying, like-kind vehicles, can we send them all to the same place?
Yep, and we're, we're currently doing that and trying to ensure that we're getting the best dollar for that. In terms of the actual mechanic, we've discussed it before, it's a great idea, we don't have a place for them to work right now. And that's one of the problems we have, is we don't have the lifts, we don't have things for them to be able to work on it. Where we'd essentially have to then rent out a business's place where we're now increasing the cost and paying someone to work in a separate place.
That, that is the silver bullet, uh, uh, on a long-term basis, is to have a facility and to have a town mechanic, um, because it will, it will work to the taxpayer's benefit. We're just a few years out from that.
Okay.
Yeah, something the public works director's gonna bring to us probably over the next few years, and he's been taking the counselors and anyone else who wants to go and look at them out to the, um, out to the garage. Um, he wants to be able to, to, uh, improve the facility out there so he can bring in those type of services.
Okay.
I, I have one question.
Sure, of course.
On the line of vehicles, um, so the number of vehicles we have, is there a way to look at, like, are there vehicles that we really don't use that often, like once or twice a year, or very infrequently, and when I say vehicles, that includes police things or fire trucks that we never use, or I don't know, little gator things that we use, that like, we're paying for insurance, we're paying for maintaining them, we only use them once or twice a year, are they absolutely necessary? Can we somehow or another get rid of them and then look at it further out when it may become a necessity? Or some, you know what I mean, it's just to save some cash in the.
No, I, I do, I'm just trying to think of.
I mean, I don't know what we have or don't have.
Equipment that we would have that would fit that model.
I mean, like, every single fire, uh, uh, thing that we have, trucks, right, all of them. Do we use them on a regular, like, are they getting used, or is there one or two just sitting there that go out once a year?
It's a good question, I mean, but I don't, I don't know that in, in the public safety sector, that's the right test, because, I mean, I, I think we have a, like a fire rescue boat that I'm sure isn't used very frequently, but we're, we wanna have it when, when we need it. Um, are there other vehicles that maybe, um, are past their useful life, um, but we retain? I don't know.
But I mean, maybe there's a way to negotiate with another town, so was it a fireboat?
I think there's a fireboat.
So a fireboat, right, like, was there a way to say, hey, you don't have a fireboat, can we split the time on it with another town?
We have a sheet.
Darren, you got a boat?
We have a sheet here that was, someone gave me a sheet that has all the, all the, uh, vehicles on there. Says Rescue One, this is a four hundred and nine thousand dollar vehicle, whatever it is, Rescue One, four hundred and thirty-one miles per year. Again, just saying, it's just, it could be.
That's what we consider our mobile toolbox, so that's got all the extrication equipment in, I mean, you look at the tanker, you, you remember four or five years ago, how important the tanker was to get on, on the dock here, so the tanker's got a hundred and eighty hours on, it's six years old. But we have it when we need it, so when we go to a district in town that has no hydrants, that we have the water source there to be able to provide to put the fire out.
It took so many years for us to get that, too.
The boat that you're talking about, yes, we do have, we have two, I'd say floating devices, we have what we call our Rescue Alive that we use for, uh, ice rescues. That basically the, uh, the crews can slide across the ice to, to, to make this rescue, and then the newest thing that came out that we got probably, what, two years ago? About, about a year ago, it's an inflatable one, um, a little bit bigger than this that you see on TV all the time for ice rescues and stuff during the winter time, we have one of those now as well.
Mr. Jared, again, just, just be presented, people look at it, that's it, just a question.
I think it's fair, all right, so I don't think many people know what the tool truck is. So the tool, I know it, I mean, I know where it sits and anything else, so can you explain why the tool truck goes out and what it does? So the rescue truck is for any motor vehicle accident, any confined space rescue, any building collapse, any hazardous material incident. It has just got a plethora of equipment on it that is specialized for the emergency that we're responding to, so not necessarily a house fire. I mean, and it'll, it'll even go to a house fire because it's got a cas- cascade system on it that will fill out air bottles on the scene. So it's just a, it's a piece of equipment that has no pump on it, it squirts no water, um, but it's just loaded with specialized equipment for different, you know. So if I would pile up on ninety-three, it's the tool truck that goes.
Absolutely is.
Went to a call that I was at when I did the ride-along with the PD for, uh, MVA with entrapments, so.
Yep, again, we just, it's, it's an example of one of many vehicles, it's just, I was always saying.
Everybody can learn.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we pay, you know, we pay a half a million dollars for these trucks, everybody should know what they're for, absolutely. And I mean, you, you know, exactly, you'll see Forestry One, it's a, it's a twenty-one-year-old truck, it's got thirty-three thousand miles on it.
Yeah.
So it doesn't, it doesn't go out a lot, but it also plows our, plows our driveways all went along both North and South Stations, so. Where those see the use is the hours that they're being used, what they're being used for, and the abuse that they take while doing it, you know? I mean, luckily, Central Station now, since we've done the addition, is plowed by the, the town contract, but we're still doing our own, both substations ourselves. So that's where those get all the wear and tear.
Okay.
I guess I was just trying to find an ROI.
Yeah.
You know, just over, you know, you spent a half a million to a million dollars on a piece of equipment, you've had it for twelve years, you've maintained it, insured it. How many times was it used? Once? Did that really justify the, the actual need? Could we have worked with another town, a couple of towns to maybe have invested in that piece of equipment that they'd have the same profit from? Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Yes. Yes.
More regional thought.
The vehicles, uh, there's nothing that we have that we could eliminate, uh, you will probably see me in a year or two looking to increase our fleet.
Yes.
Okay, next question.
All right, next question, uh, fire equipment, uh, is there any fire equipment that's needed to support mutual aid calls that is not necessary? For the Londonderry calls? Is there something that we have in order to support other surrounding towns that's not needed just for Londonderry? Could be, yes or no, that's.
Nope.
That's it.
You know, the mutual aid agreement we have with all our area communities, it's because each town may specialize in a certain thing. You know, so our rescue may get called a lot just because of the equipment that's on it, but we know that if we have a trench rescue or something like that for, you know, where the walls are gonna collapse, and we know we're gonna call Salem because they have a better equipped outfit than we do, you know, so it's just.
Okay.
We utilize each other for stuff like that.
All right, thank you. Can we transition to paperless at some point soon, make that, uh, we've got binders in front of us for all these meetings at some, when is this going to happen?
So this, this is the first year that I've not emailed you guys beforehand, asked me if you'd like PDF?
Yes.
Um, and I'll be honest with you, typically when I ask that, there is one or two people that say, yes, I would like a PDF also, give me a book, um, and anything else.
Transition to, when do we transition to paperless?
So I can tell you right now, invoice-wise, we have, all of our invoices are currently held online, or not online, on our, um, ERP system. And we've worked towards that, but paper is still somewhat necessary for certain items.
Would it be the state that's our biggest inhibitor? They're going completely paperless? Just look at our paper ballots.
Well, if you're working in that aspect, yes, but in general, there's just some things that you, you need the paper with where people, they don't like the electronic, they don't trust the electronic, they still want the paper.
Okay.
But we are working.
I think the town should make declarations saying.
We should make every effort to be paperless.
Exactly, every, start through different departments, transition to paperless, as much, eighty percent or something like that, this, there should be something.
I, I, I would agree with that, I would, I would note, though, that, um, if you're going to do that, you really need to invest in desktop scanners.
Yes.
And we don't ha- have hardly any of that right now, um, but I, I agree, it's, it's the way of the future.
Exactly.
Um, it would help us, um, more efficiently communicate across departments as well, because, you know, people do come in and, uh, with a question and they get bounced to the, from the building department, to the planning department, to the assessing department, and we're, you know, and then maybe to some other departments, and, um, I could tell you that one of the things that, that the finance director and I have done in the last, uh, couple of years is created a, a management drive for us in our departments, so that, um, um, things, you know, when they pass the council are scanned in and, um, and we're able to deal with them that way. It's a little improvement, but it's, it's made a big difference for, for our two departments.
So, um, e- exactly what Mike just said, a perfect example, too, is with our audit days to come, and here's a book, here's a book, here's a book. They now have a share drive and hear it all as.
It's more likely to ask for paper now.
They.
That's what I'm dealing with.
They've.
Not paper.
They're good with, uh, right now.
I'm sorry.
They're good with us putting it, yes.
They want electronic.
Every now and then, they do wanna see the actual full paper.
They want electronic because they're working remote, more people work remote, and it's, it's going to be.
Yep, the other thing to keep in mind, my IT guy, 'cause the last time we tried, we worked towards going paperless, was for the invoices, and, uh, we didn't bring him in, and he was not thrilled with the increase in server memory usage that he did not prepare for. So that is another expense that we'd have to look at, is increasing the memory and server capabilities for our IT infrastructure.
Tim, you have a question, but I'd like to wrap this up as quickly as possible, I don't wanna go after ten, if the budget committee has, I, I have one more that I wanna present. If anyone else in the budget committee has one more they wanna present as a question, um, let's get those out, um, so, Tim, do you have something?
My comment was that on, well, uh, paperless is nice and everything like that, since I do work in IT, and we just try to do that with our company, and that same thing, wasn't, wasn't asked to come in and talk about it. You need scanners, you need desktop systems that can handle it, you need monitors that can see the whole thing, you gotta have a server that can support in the background, and you need storage space to keep up with it. And you need availability for people that don't have systems to somehow get access to that, whether it's a public kiosk or whatever it is you give them. So it can actually cost you a lot more to go paperless than the idea of, of it in the meantime.
What, what does this cost, the print?
A lot less than buying a bunch of computers and servers and.
What do you think this, what do you think this costs to print?
That thing, well, it's black and white.
Have you seen eleven cents or twelve cents?
No, that, per page, usually on.
Print there, four.
If you buy the paper, not count the paper, just use a printer thing, point one-tenth of a penny. That's what it costs for a copier of black and white.
In ink, yeah.
With things and stuff like that, now if you buy the paper, I don't know what we're gonna pay for papers divided by five hundred, you add that to one-tenth of a penny, it's a lot cheaper to keep doing that.
And the manually, and the manually processing, too, pick it up, so there's this manual effort involved in it.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so again, paperless, it's all, I just wanna put that out there, so I have one more, and whatever else in the budget committee wants to present one, my last one, this is going out to the, uh, the sand salt bins that are placed throughout the town, can we reduce or eliminate those so, those bins? Reduce at, at a minimum, can we reduce them? I think there, the reason I ask that is because I find that there, there's a safety hazard because I see cars parked next to them in the road, people are standing next to them on, on ice. So I'm hoping that we could reduce them or eliminate them.
Uh, that's a great question, we, that we have been discussing quite a bit about, and for that, one of those very concerns. There's also the labor side of it, too, you know, we have to send two guys out, sometimes practically daily, uh, when we're in a real snow event, and, you know, one after the other, after the other. Um, so location is one, we talked about that, actually, uh, in-house the other week, looking at tweaking some of the locations, the alternate locations. It'd be nice if we could have just one area that residents could go, even twenty-four hours a day, in a parking lot somewhere, and light and things like that, that's safe. And that would be easy for us to replenish, if you just have one source, then it, it gets depleted quite frequently, and that would, that would likely, uh, be most beneficial if it was located at our facility.
Yes.
Unfortunately, the way we're situated down there, that's one of the things that I will incorporate into, uh, what we're looking at for the future, but uh, we don't have that ability to do that at our facility. Um, so, cutting back on locations, uh, we could, but what, what might happen with that is, you know, right now, I think we have close to twenty-four of them. If we go down to twelve, now you're increasing the amount of people that are at the other locations, and to your point, you know, probably not the best place to be out on the side of the road anyway.
Yes.
Uh, in, in unlit areas especially.
Yep.
Um, and people will go at probably the worst opportune moments to get it, because they didn't plan ahead, and they didn't go out in the daylight or whatever, and they're, they're doing it in the throes of when they need it. Um, so, it, it is something that I'm looking at, and I, and I've identified as a public safety matter, is, and, and just as an efficiency within our operation, how that might free up labor hours.
Yep.
That we could be, you know, washing the trucks more, managing the fleet more, um, rather than going around filling up sand barrels.
When do they go out? When do those bins get, please?
Uh, usually within the next week or so, we'll place them out.
Can't make a decision now? Can't do it?
What's that?
Can't decide now that, don't need to do them more?
That's an operational decision, I mean, if, if the town manager and the public works director wants to eliminate half of them, that's up to them.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it, will, will it save, will it save you money? Will it save us money?
Yeah.
Uh, it, it would probably give us some more operational efficiencies in other areas that we could redirect that labor to, to take care of, uh, but again, I'd, I'd hate to, you know, just go ahead and reduce it by half, and then, uh, location that, you know, typically experiences one or two trips a day now has ten going to that location, and, you know, it's, it becomes a safety issue, then something happens because we deviated from it. Uh, I, I would argue that perhaps we, we don't belong out on the side of the road at all.
Yeah, I agree.
But where, where do we put them, uh, and then, you know, we could put a bin here at public, uh, behind Town Hall, but, yeah. Why do we have them? Well. I mean, I know, but we had them, I'm just curious, why do we have them? Sure, and, well, in the interest of time, most public works can, uh, do, do, you know, supply a, a salt-sand mix, um, most, all communities do that. Um, the way that we do it here, uh, i- is very similar to how it used to be back before we had all-wheel-drive, four-wheel-drive, you know, uh, all-season tires and things like that, and they're placed, and if you notice where they're placed in most of the part of the town, it's where there's a hill or a bad curve or whatnot. So if somebody does go slide and go into a snowbank, or they, they can't make it up a hill, they could get out and throw it on the street, but a lot of it that now is really just for personal use. Uh, they're really not there to, to put it on the street, we have a good operation where we can provide, you know, the necessary traction on the roadway, so people are just getting it for their own personal use. So is the best place for them to get it for their own personal use in twenty-four locations around town? Probably not. In, in today's world, they should be able to go to one area, but where that one area is where we can go and replenish it easy enough, um, you know, hasn't been determined yet, but we're, we're looking at it.
All right.
Yeah, and so I would just echo that, I mean, from an operational standpoint, I, I think it, it makes sense to, to have, ask that question, I don't really understand why they're, they're out there, but I wanna understand it a little bit better than, um, uh, with Dave in the next week or so before they're put out, before I.
Okay.
Give an answer.
I just wanna say, it's true, um, Dave, I've seen people over on Hardy, trying to get up my, it, it doesn't look like a hill, but it is a hill.
Right.
And I've seen people like, just trying to get up, trying to get up, and finally they run over there and they throw it out, and they can make it to the stop sign, but, you know, I'm glad it's there because of that, because.
C- c- cuz Dave and I will, will get calls from, from people who are, who are pissed that it's, uh, it's not being provided anymore, so I just wanna make sure that I, I understand that, that calculus, uh, so that I can answer those questions.
Yes, John.
I'm looking for an analysis tonight, I just put it out there as a, uh, a, maybe a, uh, an analysis can be done to see if there's any financial benefit to the town to contract out the operations of the drop-off center. Citizens get to still drop their stuff off, but can a private contractor do more financially effectively than the town can do it?
Okay, thank you. Ron? Anything else?
I covered mine already.
No? Jen?
Jen.
Tim?
Anybody from the council? All right, that's it on Budget Workshop, workshop. Um, all right, Resolution two oh two-two dash two-one, a resolution creating the Londonderry Utilities Committee. Now, we keep hearing from Mr. Breslin with regards to what are we gonna do about electricity, water, et cetera. Um, so what the council's come up with is, is something that, to empower a committee that will be able to start addressing these issues and talking about them, so, Mr. Malaguti, I'll let you, uh, walk us through the process. Those of you who, um, you know, don't wanna stay and enjoyed the, uh, conversation about the, uh, Utilities Commission, feel free to exit.
And, and Mr. Chairman, my thanks to the department heads for, uh, being here and for contributing their expertise this evening. This is pretty straightforward, um, there was a lot of discussion about, um, uh, these various utilities and the need, um, to address the, these issues on a, on a comprehensive basis. Um, we have a, uh, a task force right now that's studying, um, energy efficiency, um, but that doesn't certainly extend out into areas like broadband or water. Um, and so the suggestion was made, and I think it was a good suggestion, that we adopt something more, uh, comprehensive, that will not just have a finite existence, but will, uh, act as a standing committee formed by the town council, um, to study these issues. And just for everybody's benefit, the issues that I'm, uh, suggesting, and, and this could change based on, uh, your input this evening, uh, the cost and availability. um, uh, the cost and availability of, um, broadband, high, high-speed broadband, home heating oil, natural gas, propane, drinking water, um, fuel for town vehicles, electricity and the infra- infrastructure required to support these utilities. I'm proposing, uh, but again, there's room for flexibility here if somebody has a different idea, uh, five members of the public appointed by the council. As I've heard the council discuss this, the purpose is to, um, tap into the expertise of people in the community, uh, but also to, um, uh, you know, not have another committee assignment for, for a town counselor necessarily to, to sit on. Um, but again, there's, there's room for, um, uh, flexibility there or change. This is just what I heard, uh, and based on the discussions before the, uh, before the council. Um, and then there are reporting requirements, um, ninety-one A requirements, the like, that any town, uh, council or committee, uh, would have. So, um, with that, I'm happy to take any questions that the council has.
I had a question, Mike. What would the, what would the term be? How many years?
Um, the term could be, um, that, so there, that's an, actually a really good question. Um, the term of office is defined in the town code and I believe that what the town code says is, and I, I apologize if I don't have a, uh, developed answer for this, is that folks serve, uh, until their successor is appointed, um, let's just.
Cause most committees are three years in town, correct?
I think the land use boards are three years is my understanding. I'm not sure about the other boards.
I think like, budget committee, solid waste, I think most of them are three years.
Three, two and. And then they divide the people.
Yeah.
So that it alternates.
Right.
I think pretty much everything.
So you're right, it looks like the default, in this, I'm looking at the administrative code right here, um, is, is three years. But there is the, there is a provision of state law that says that, uh, folks continue to serve until a successor is seated. So that's to prevent vacancies, um, during an interim period between somebody's term lapsing and somebody else being installed.
I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I, I, I would agree with Mr. Dunn regarding, um, uh, like a term. I do think three years is standard with most, um, most of the other committees and boards that we have. And just clarification, this is an advisory committee?
Correct, purely advisory.
Okay, and then, um, would this, so you're talking about appointment, not election, correct?
Correct. I don't believe there's a mechanism under state law or vehicle under state law to, um, uh, have an elected, um, member of a committee that isn't named in the town charter or in a, a town statute.
Okay.
How do I give this committee some teeth?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, their advisory, we should probably staggered terms of one, two and three years or two and three years. But, you know, I don't wanna create a committee just to create a committee. I want them to be able to have some sort of, you know, um, I don't know if it, I don't know if the right word's authority or, 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 or ability to be able to, you know, make some decisions that make a difference. I mean, just, otherwise they'll be, they'll be completely ineffective and nobody will join it.
I agree with you. I do agree with you. And I mean, that's where we struggled even in the task force.
Right.
You know, you, you were there.
Yeah, you're right.
Talking to, you know, these solar guys, would we have liked to said to the one we thought was the best after interviewing, I think about six of them, to say, we'd like to go to the next step, could you write these numbers? Let us look at a proposal to two of, the two top ones or the three top ones. And then out of that one, be able to move to the next.
Right.
And to then be able to come to the council and say, we've investigated, here's all the backup documents, this was our conclusion, would you like to take it forward? But we had no ability to do that.
How many committee members were on there?
Nine.
Nine?
So that's, that's a.
Nine plus the chair.
Frankly, I think, I mean, it's good to have everybody involved, but I think that may have, may contribute to, that's not an ideal size for a committee, I, I don't think.
Five, five's a good number, seven's a maximum number, but, but if they, but if they don't have any ability to be able to, you know.
Add value.
You know.
Um, it's, you know, it's.
Organize.
Move, move the ball forward.
It, it, it needs to be more, more streamlined than that.
Like, we had very little power, even like talking to the schools.
Uh-huh.
To get some sort of numbers.
Yeah.
I mean, even though it's public information, it was a challenge. It took us.
Yeah.
Five months for them to give us what Justin gave us in twenty-four to forty-eight hours.
So, so.
I mean, it was very, very challenging.
There are a couple.
Even with two school board members. Sorry, Mike.
I, I'm sorry, uh, Councilor Paul, I didn't mean to cut you off. Um, I mean, I guess I would have a couple of responses. One is, um, I think that the problem that you, I don't, I think there's a way to allow a committee that's studying a particular subject to deal with vendors. Um, certainly, I have authority as town manager to liaise with vendors, to solicit proposals, to do all of that. And so I would suggest that, um, uh, th- there is a way to do that without having to run everything through the council. The problem is that, um, if, if, if the, if the committee isn't named in the, in the charter and if the committee isn't a creature of state law, it is derivative of the town council. Um, and, and so in terms of actual decision-making authority, I think if you, there are ways to, to, to beef it up and to, um, get creative with it, I, I would like some time to think about that. Um, the ultimate way to do it is to write it into the charter.
Short of writing it into the charter, can't I, can't I, I mean, the council? What I, what I'm trying to figure out is, is can we write a resolution in, in a way in which the, um, the authority doesn't necessarily transfer from the council to the committee, but the committee is given, um, you know, parameters in which they get the council's support in, in what they're doing. I don't exactly know how to phrase that, but what I want the committee to be able to feel that they're doing is that, that chairperson of that committee just has just as much authority to come as Lynn would come in from waste ma- from waste services or, Art would come from planning or wh- wh- whomever else would be able to come to us and be able to say, you know, it's what I need. And, you know, and, and you've told me I'm gonna get it.
Yeah.
So that future councils can be able to say, you know, they're not gonna just try to get rid of this thing.
Yeah.
Because something like this is gonna be important going forward.
I, I would say, let me, let me give that some thought and talk to Attorney Ramsdale. I think there probably is a way to, to achieve that. Um, the, the only other thing I'll mention is that, you know, the risk, especially when you have a large committee, is there's always that balancing act between, um, you know, getting what they need from the town staff and then, um, becoming, uh, a bit unwieldy in terms of the, the burden on the town staff. And so I think it's really important that we establish and enforce strict, um, liaison, um, uh, features to this committee, whatever it is, um, so that we don't have multiple people reaching out to multiple staff members and doing things at cross purposes.
It'll be done through the chair.
Correct.
Yes, just, Joe.
So I think, um, just my, my two cents on this. So I like the way you have it structured as far as a chair, a, um, a vice chair and a secretary, but that leaves two Indians. So I, this, this co- conversation you talked about nine, five and seven. Here's, here's my pitch. I think it should be five with two other people, seven altogether, and the other two people should be one from town council, one from school committee. Because now what you do is you have two people that are voted to boards and that's the teeth you need to get things going. So if a, if a, if a town council's on there, I would say, hey, my committee, this, this, uh, committee has asked for this from you. Same thing with the school person. School person would say, my committee has asked for this from you. And that way you eliminate the, the, the things that you did possibly. I know you said there was two school committees.
There was two school officials there and, yeah.
And school board members?
One was the school board.
Yeah.
It was Amy Fillmore and, um, the other one was Alan. He's like a, he's kinda like a Dave, Dave Woolley. Yeah, yeah, kinda.
Well, then what I would do is, is, is kinda learn from those experiences and maybe the town manager can go across, across the, um, the street and say, look, this is something that we re- I think we should do collaboratively, it's something that we should, we should both do as two committees that are, the, the decision-making committees in, in the town. And, um, when, and when, and if they need support, we, we, we both need to promise this committee that we'll be there for them.
And, and the only reason I think larger, and, and you're gonna think I'm nuts, but you need the, the base committee. But then, like you just said, there's a lot of topics. You can't burden all these people with all these topics. So you need to be able to say, you three people are gonna focus in on water, you three are gonna focus in on electricity, you three are gonna focus in on, you know, cause that's their expertise. You kinda get a feel.
It can be overlapped too.
A little, but that's what they'll do with the board. They'll, they'll, so they'll all be charged and that's kinda what we were doing. You know, so Mike had his expertise and Ron had his expertise, so we would gather certain inform- and then come back and report and then cross over. But that's how we kinda did it because one person just looking at all of that, it would, you're never gonna get anywhere. And I think we should maybe look at some of the towns that have these things already set up and how they function, like how Dover works or.
And as far as, uh, I think your point earlier was about too many people coming to everybody, I think that would be, as we said, just to echo a function of the, uh, chair. Chair primarily, and if the chair can't do it, maybe the vice chair is an example to communicate. So there's one, you know, that, during their meetings, they're gonna, um, establish, you know, what they wanna communicate and that would be the spokesperson to come to the, wherever, whatever side that they needed to come to.
So, Mr. Chair and Mr. Malaguti, so I agree with Councilor Paul in regards to, you know, having, I, I, my personally think seven would probably be more appropriate. However, there, there are answers and stuff, you, you know, some, some homework that you need to do and stuff like that. So I would feel comfortable with Chair continuing this to our next meeting or when appropriate.
All right, so what we're hearing is, is that basically more teeth, possibly, um, request that the school board would have a, we probably could request a liaison for the school board. I don't know that we can demand that they join a committee liaison from the council. So what I'm hearing is five voting members, two alternates, um, that's what I'm hearing so far.
Would the, uh.
And something that gives them some sort of, um, some sort of ability to be able to execute, I guess, as they, as, as, as I think about it some more.
Would the county, pardon? I'm sorry, I was gonna say, would the council, councillor and school board member have a vote?
Um, I, you know, I mean, we don't do that on other committees. We can certainly discuss that more. You know, and, and what the pros and the cons that would be, it would depend on, depending on how engaging the school board can be. I mean, I can't speak for them. I mean, I'm not saying in a negative way, I just don't know how engaging they would be. I mean, we can, we, we can tell somebody from the council to go, but we can't tell somebody from the school board to go.
Right.
Anything else?
Just say, I'll add one more comment on that, just as the chairman of the solid waste committee. I think it's important for this committee or any committee to have a set of run rules and really a set of goals established from both the council and from.
Totally agree.
From town staff, you know, just like this is what we really want you to accomplish is, you know, you go in with an open book and you say, there's just so much we can look at, we don't get anything done.
I agree with.
I think you really have to bound what their responsibilities are and I think that has to come from the council.
And I, and I appreciate the suggestion to integrate with the town staff because I really do view this as an opportunity to focus on things that frankly, the town staff can't devote their full attention to. And I think the energy committee is a, a great example of that.
And, and that's what we do, I think, very successfully with the solid waste committee. We work with Bob Carey. He, he's at every meeting. I, I talk with Bob, you know, once a week and I think that works out very well.
I would agree with you. That would've helped us immensely if we had more of that, but we didn't.
But, you know, but.
I, I would do.
That's how you can run an effective committee too, by knowing what everyone's expectations are.
I, I would take issue a little bit with that, Mr. Chairman, that comment, that, because I think, um, you know, my staff made themselves more than available to the, uh, energy committee, uh.
No, 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 that's not what I meant. I meant being at the meetings to have input. You took that out of context. You know, he says he sat.
Well, I apologize, I apologize.
He sat with, um, Mr. Carey on a regular ba- like, when Dave Woolley came and talked and presented, he helped us so much by doing that, but we couldn't get the other guys to come in and do, but we were able to set up appointments and sit and get the data we needed from them and then that was related. You took it the wrong way.
I, I might have and I apologize if that's the case.
No worries.
And then I would also suggest that, uh, the committees, uh, purview include solid waste and sewer.
I agree. Recycling, yeah.
Well, some, maybe somehow, some way they can work together.
Yep.
Uh, cause I'm not looking to eliminate, I, I think what solid waste does is important too.
Oh, no, I, I think it, I think it could be viewed as a utility, as a public utility, removal of solid waste.
Agreed.
So, um, and, uh, yeah, so the, the, the reason that I didn't include sewer, uh, and, uh, solid waste is because I saw that they already, I didn't wanna, uh, annex, you know, solid waste or, uh,
No.
Or this, cause there is a.
I think the, the charge of this committee is too great for five people. I think nine people's too much to make a committee work efficiently. So I, I don't know how to balance that, but, uh, I think if we're, if it's a utility committee, it should encompass all what I would consider public utilities.
And there is this dormant sewer advisory committee, I believe, as well, that.
I believe there is.
So taking what he said one step forward, I didn't mean to interrupt you, John.
No, go ahead.
But what he said is, is kinda in my mind, the envision of the whole energy group. You have the broad team, but then you have the exacting, so eventually, you have your energy committee that's like kinda sits up here, like you, you know, on a flow chart and off of that you have your sewer, your water, your, it, it, cause they do, even though they're together, they do have to operate separately and that's what, you know, when, when I talked to, um, we, we had that conversation at the meeting and, and we brought that up and, I agreed with him that even though you're, you're here doing your thing, it should be connected up here. So you have, so I think eventually what you'll see happen is tier downs that will form other groups that will be necessary. And those groups could be three people just doing, you know, working one-on-one with, like a Bob Carey, working one-on-one with whoever's focused, like planning or something.
I think it could work well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good on that one?
Yep.
All right, um, old business done, approval of minutes. I'm looking for approval of minutes for November seventh and fourteenth as presented.
Real, real quick.
Point of, point of.
The fourteenth, um, just a correction on the fourteenth, it says that Vice Chairman Joe Green was absent. Um, I detest that he was present.
Thank you.
Uh, to that meeting.
Everybody always thinks I'm absent, thank you.
So the four- November fourteenth, uh, change Joe, um, chair, uh, vice chair.
So the, approval of November seventh as presented.
Can I go back to, um, this resolution is here, but, um, I don't know that we took a vote to push it to the next meeting. Is, do we have to have a vote? He, he said.
Procedure, just continue.
Okay, is that okay? Just wanna make sure. Thank you.
No problem. Um, approval of minutes for the seventh as presented.
So moved.
Check, second.
Well, in favor, someone might be saying aye.
Aye.
Um, noted approval of minutes as amended to show the council of Green was not absent.
So moved.
Second.
Well, is in favor, someone might be saying aye.
Aye.
Um, appointments liaison, any liaison reports? Anything new? Now, manager report?
Uh, no town manager report this evening, Mr. Chairman.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, our next meeting is a town council budget public hearing for, uh, December fifth, twenty-twenty-two at seven o'clock in these chambers.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna state beforehand for anyone still watching, tax bills are currently available online if you'd like to pay. They should be due on December twenty-ninth.
December twenty-ninth, happy new year. All right, did you get all your notes you needed from the budget committee for, for the budget?
I believe so. I will re-watch it and, um, make sure I caught everything.
Okay. I've got a pretty good list, uh, that hopefully could avoid the finance director having to re-watch the whole meeting.
Okay. Does anything further? I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Well, is in favor, someone might be saying aye.
Aye.
Good night, ladies and gentlemen.